Chair Schmidt, you may begin.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Welcome to the March 28th City of Burlingame Planning Commission Meeting. For all in attendance today, please note that this planning commission meeting is being held using Zoom webinar format. So if you see that the planning commissioners and staff are panelists, please note that there are several ways to submit comments during this meeting. You may raise your hand in Zoom by clicking on the raise hand button located at the bottom of your screen. Members of the public who are participating in the Zoom webinar by phone can dial star nine. You may also send your comments by email to publiccomment@burlingame.org. Staff will be monitoring emails submitted during the meeting, which will be read at the appropriate time. The length of the emailed comment should be commensurate with the three minutes customarily allowed for verbal comments. If you're an applicant or an applicant's representative, I will ask you to raise your hand when your agenda item is up for discussion so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. We ask that you also turn on your video at that time so that we may have more clear communication, simulating the experience we would have if we were meeting in person. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube and will be uploaded at the city's website after the meeting. So moving, moving on to item number two, roll call. Let the record note that Commissioner Gall is it, is missing.
And say.
Oh, and Commissioner Say. Rest of the members are present this evening. We have meeting minutes to approve. So moving on to item number three, we have our draft February 28th, 2022 planning commission meeting minutes. Are there any changes to be made? Commissioner Faaf?
Yes, I don't know if it's a change, but I'm just going to say it. It sort of was an omission regarding 220 Park Road. I'm pretty sure that I asked the attorney to clarify and to confirm that a sign variance travels with the remains with the property, even if the tenants or the ownership changes. That was my change, my addition. Okay.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Tronos.
Yes, thank you. I sent in some corrections. I just have one correction to those corrections and that item eight B, I believe, should be changed to say that we voted to continue the item, not bring it back for regular action, but the correction was made to nine, so we just need to change that correction so that it shows up on item eight B instead.
Great, thank you. Do we have that covered now? Director Gardner?
So those amendments, should there be a motion to accept the minutes as amended, then those amendments will be included in the final version.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion with the previously submitted comments and corrections, as well as the two comments from this evening from Commissioner Faaf and myself.
I second.
Okay, so we've got the motion from Commissioner Tronos and a second by Commissioner Faaf. Do we have any further discussion? No? Right, can we vote?
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Faaf?
Aye.
Commissioner Tronos? Vice Chair Loftus? And Chair Schmidt?
Aye. Motion carries five zero zero two. Okay, moving on. Approval of the agenda. So do we have any changes of the agenda this evening?
No Chair, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. I know that I am going to be recusing myself from items nine A sixteen seventeen Ralston and item nine B three oh nine Chapin Lane, as I live within 500 feet of both of those properties. Are there any other recusals this evening or are we good? Okay, looks like we're good. Okay, then moving on to item number five, public comments. Members of the public may speak about any item that is not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to suggest an item for a future planning commission agenda may do so during the public comment period. Ralph Brown Act, the state local agency open meeting law prohibits the planning commission from acting on any matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. A timer will sound at the end of the time and may adjust the time limit in light of the number of anticipated speakers. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on any item that is not on our agenda? Looking at the public, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. Okay, then I'm going to move on to the next item.
And I'll just confirm also, we did not receive any emails in the public comment at burlingame.org that were not for already agendized topics.
Perfect. That makes my job easier. Okay, moving on, we do not have any study items this evening, so and we do not have any consent calendar this evening. So next item up is eight A regular action, five oh one Bayswater Avenue. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Not seeing any movement. Let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to demolish an existing one-story single unit dwelling with the detached one-car garage on the site. They're proposing to build a new two-story single unit dwelling and detached garage. The new single unit dwelling would contain four bedrooms and the required single covered parking space would be provided in the detached garage. The planning commission reviewed this project last at their February 28th meeting. The applicant has addressed the suggestions made by the commission at that meeting in revised plans and in a response letter that's included in the staff report. The design review criteria is also listed in your report and I can take any questions at this time.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Seeing none, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project? There you go, you're up.
Oh, good evening Commissioners, Jesse Gursa, GCD Incorporated. I'd like to thank you again for your review of our project at five oh one Bayswater. We appreciate your review and your comments regarding the project itself. I think they were fairly minor in regards to the changes to the plans and I expressed or explained our changes within that letter. And I hope everything pretty much makes sense. I did speak to the neighbor next door. Was it Andy? I believe, yes, Andy, in regards to the patio that was on the side yard and also accessibility to the garage on his property. And he's been really cooperative and liked our solutions and we revised the patio on the side yard just to be as steps so that it wouldn't be used in the future by the future homeowner for any kind of like, you know, party central area or so what have you. And then also we were going to work with providing an access gate for him to access the side of the garage. Otherwise, I think the other comments we replied to and I think that was about it.
Great, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak about this item, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing any. Do we have any comments, email or otherwise?
No emailed comments, no.
Okay, great. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners' comments. Commissioner Faaf?
Well, I just want to say I think it's going to be a great project. You have a real nice, a very unique touch and it's just on these small lots, you just know how to do it very well and really appreciate you tending to Andy's concerns and the idea with that side gate is brilliant. I'm gonna have to think of that if we ever have some construction around our house because I can't get to the inside of my garage either, so that was really good. Thanks.
Okay, Vice Chair Loftus?
I agree with Commissioner Faaf. This is a nice project. I think everything has been addressed and I moved that we approved the project with the findings in the staff report.
Second.
Great, so a motion by Vice Chair Loftus and a second by Commissioner Tronos. Any further discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Faaf?
Aye.
Commissioner Tronos? Vice Chair Loftus?
Aye.
And Chair Schmidt?
Aye. Motion carries five zero zero two. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council, by 5:00 PM on the 10th day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $708, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to eight B fifteen sixty-one Drake. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like to note that I was absent from the study meeting for this project on March 14th of this year, but I did read in detail the staff report as well as watched the video for this item when it was up for study.
Great, thank you. Okay, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
The subject property is an interior lot with an irregular shape and it's located in the cul-de-sac of Drake Avenue. Mills Creek runs through the rear portion of the lot. The applicant is proposing a second story addition to the existing two-story house and the addition would be above the main living area. With this application, the number of bedrooms would be increasing from three to five and the two required covered parking spaces are already provided in the existing attached garage. The application includes a request for a left side setback variance and a request for a special permit for declining height envelope on the left side of the proposed second floor. The planning commission reviewed this project at their March 14th hearing and the applicant has responded to the suggestions given in that meeting with revisions in the staff report. I'm sorry, with revisions in the plans and a response letter. The staff report also includes suggested findings for the variance and the special permits requests and stocks available for questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Faaf?
Well, I'm not really sure it's a staff question. It might be the applicant question. There are, in my papers, I have two different versions of the front door. One is on the rendering and the other is a rounded version on the line drawings and I think the rendering has a newer date and so I'm just not sure what they're, which one they are submitting.
Okay, well, that sounds to me like a question for the applicant when we open up the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Then if we don't have any more questions for the app for staff, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And if you're the applicant, the, let's see, no, you already raised your hand. So let's get to the applicant. Robert, you need to unmute yourself.
There we go.
Hey, how are you doing?
Meeting staff and commissioners, Robert Meton Architect, the owners are here also, Paul and Robin. And we did make the changes that were recommended as far as the front door and changed the style of the front entry slightly and then made the wall that was at the kitchen a green wall and it showed up on the architectural plans that you have that are hard copies. And what happened was is I was anxious to get the rendering going and it looks like the renderer worked off of the the older plan and then it didn't get the one edit that showed the round door, but the round door is what we're looking to do. It's glazed and it's a little bit lower in height and it's not as tall as the previous one. And then again, we added the green wall. So those are the main changes and then I think the main impetus to get the rendering going was to look at the view of the project from the street side to show how it appears and so forth and there's a slight, the door is a square door, so it needs to be rounded with more glass. So yes, you are correct.
Okay, great. Then questions for the applicant? Commissioner Faaf?
Oh, yes, sorry. Didn't mean to belabor it, but and so I just wanted to say, just shortening the the height of the door and kind of cleaning it up, at least the rendering, it doesn't bother me as much, but I just wanted to say that. I think the shortness of it was helpful. I like the round as well, but it, anyway, just wanted to say that. The other thing I didn't understand in the rendering and I know renderings aren't the real thing. There's a line that runs, a horizontal line above the garage and I didn't know is that, yes, thank you. Is that just an error in the, in the resolution or what is that?
Oh. Oh yeah, I could see that.
Existing trim.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, there's some stucco detailing that was done previously, like over the garage doors, there was that pediment and then there's some features along the entry that were, the walkway that we're trying to emulate at the door too. So I think it's a stucco feature, if I'm correct.
You're saying the ones that are way up high, maybe two and a half feet below, they run right through the mullion of the window, like looks. Okay.
Double check on that, but definitely the part of the entablature over the garage door is existing and then I'll double check as far as that one part that's up there before.
Okay, if it's there, it's there. Just curious. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I can confirm that it is there because I'm looking at Google Earth now.
Oh, wow. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tronos?
I know that like Commissioner Faaf says, you know, with renters, they take a certain license, et cetera, but I believe you mentioned at the study meeting when I watched the video and I just want to double check. But the fence line that's between this property and 1557, that's, that's going to remain. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, it's really tight, you know, heading over to that front door. You don't really get a lot of view of that, of that facade anyway.
The rendering exposes it more than reality. So yeah, you see a full view of it, but in reality, you don't get to see that whole area there.
Looks like the renderer actually removed 1557 altogether.
Yeah, quite good at doing that.
Wanted to verify on that fence, so thank you. Okay.
Okay, most of you have any further questions for the applicant? And I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing and see if anybody in the public would like to speak on this item. If so, please raise your hand now. Not seeing any movement in the public. Do we have any emails or other comments?
Nope, no emails on this application.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Comments? Commissioner Faaf?
Well, since I spoke so much before, I think I just want to say I think it looks really good and you did a great job of addressing the concerns and I, am I allowed to make a move? Or no, someone else, some other people want to speak. Okay, do I make a motion? Okay, I move to approve this 1561 Drake Avenue.
And Commissioner Faaf, I just wanted to add, are you also looking for the, to approve the variance and the special permit?
Oh, yes, yes, I am.
Went to the staff report. Okay, great. Perfect motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Faaf and a second by Vice Chair Loftus. Is there any further discussion? I would only like to say thank you for the rendering because it did make that front look of the garage. It makes it really easy to see that the second floor is not really impactful at all. So it wasn't wasted effort. It was actually something that helped make this easy. So thank you. So moving on then, let's vote.
Commissioner Camerato?
Aye.
Commissioner Faaf?
Aye.
Commissioner Tronos? Vice Chair Loftus?
Aye.
And Chair Schmidt?
Aye. Motion carries five zero zero two. And an action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by 5:00 PM on the 10th day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $708, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item number eight C thirteen fifteen Sanchez Avenue. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note in the ex parte communications regarding the project? Okay, seeing no movement, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Subject property is an interior lot and the existing one-story single dwelling unit and the detached garage are proposed to be demolished. The applicant proposes to construct a new two-story single unit dwelling with four bedrooms. The required parking is provided on site and the commission reviewed this project on their February 28th action meeting agenda. It was continued by the commission who requested that the applicant consider two additional revisions regarding the massing of the proposed main dwelling. So the applicant has detailed the changes he made in a response letter that's included in the staff report. That concludes this introduction. I'm available for questions of staff.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And would the applicant please come forward, state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project?
Here we go.
There you go, you're on.
Sorry about that. Tim Peterson, Peterson Architecture. We met an effort to address the comments from the first design meeting. Firstly, dropping the second story plate down six inches. And then also making an effort to look, look at the windows. I think that was one thing we didn't address in the last meeting and that was developing interior elevations and really studying the scale of the windows in each of the rooms and really figuring out how we can improve the function of those windows as well as the scale of the windows is sort of a catch 22 in some ways, reducing the windows increases the size of the walls and vice versa, so I think we improved the elevations of the project. I think the left side scale that we talked about is rather difficult working with the declining height envelope and also trying to maintain additional parking, even if it's for a small electric car. Trying to work with a 40-foot wide lot as well as a house that fronts the street at 20, you know, less than 28 feet, so I think improvements we've made, the revisions we made have improved the elevations and I'm willing to take questions and look forward to your input.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and go to the public and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this item. Do you do? Please raise your hand now.
I do.
Did you see a hand?
Go ahead.
Are you gonna let him in? There we go. You may unmute yourself, Waldo and
I'm Waldo Hinshaw and let me see if I can turn on the video. Now I live right behind them, so their back 50-foot kitchen window looks right out onto their backyard. So we're one of the few people who were directly affected by the house. We have no complaints, no suggestions. The only thing I would mention is the landscaping affects us a little bit. So we would really like to talk to the landscaper before that happens, which I'm sure will be some time from now. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. I am sure the applicant would be happy to work with you on that and that is a good thing to do for good neighbors.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then Director Gardner, were there any other emails or anything that came in?
There is one email that has just come in. It is not signed and it reads, "I tried to get on the meeting tonight but couldn't get on. Burlingame is nice the way it is. I feel a second story will destroy the view and also makes the street awful. It ruins the site for the neighbors on either side. I think it takes away the nice older neighborhood. It will also cause too much noise and take away parking for the residents in the neighborhood. If they need a bigger place, they should have, they should move or thought of that before they moved, moved into the house. These houses are probably 100 years old and a modern building ruins and also will probably raise our taxes. Can't they add to the back and not go up? And as mentioned, this is not signed."
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Could I just say one thing before you close?
Sure.
The, 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 the next, the right side neighbor has a two-story house and there's, it's a mixture of one-story and two-story houses in the neighborhood. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Do we have comments? Commissioner Camerato?
Yeah, I like the changes that have been made. I think the architect has done a great job in doing what we've asked. I think it's a charming home that will fit in the neighborhood. So I can see to approve this project as per the staff, staff report.
And are you making that a motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a second? I'll go ahead and second it. I like the project too, and I think that the changes have been a good change. So motion by Commissioner Camerato and a second by me. Any further discussion? Okay, then let's vote.
Commissioner Camerato.
Aye.
Commissioner Faff.
Aye.
Commissioner Torones. Vice Chair Loftus.
Aye.
Cherishman.
Aye. Motion carries five zero zero two. And an action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within ten days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by five P M. On the tenth day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of seven hundred and eight dollars, which includes noting of same cost. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item eight, D fifteen oh nine El Camino Real. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note in the ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, an application for mitigated negative declaration, rezoning, general plan amendment, condominium permit, fence exception, tentative condominium map and tentative and final parcel map for a new eleven-unit residential condominium development at fifteen oh nine El Camino Real was approved by the city council on September nineteenth, twenty sixteen. With this application, the applicant is requesting approval of an amendment to the condominium permit to add an additional common open space on the roof of the condominium building. The rooftop terrace would measure three thousand two hundred ninety-two square feet and would be located at the center of the building. Rooftop terrace is proposed to be situated approximately twenty-one feet from the front of the building and thirty-five feet from the rear of the building, which would also be fifty-five, approximately fifty-five feet from the ten-foot wide alley abutting the single-family residences along Balboa Avenue to the rear. Mills Creek is located to the right of the building and a one-story commercial building is to the left. The rooftop terrace being closed within forty-two-inch tall parapets along the edges of the building and more specifically would be surrounded by an eighteen-inch wide planter box. Please refer to the revised plans submitted by the applicant, date stamped December twenty-third, twenty twenty, for more information. At the planning commission meeting on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, the commissioners expressed concerns with the size of the rooftop terrace and impacts on the neighboring properties with regards to privacy, noise and exterior lighting. The applicant submitted two response letters dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one and June twenty, sorry, June eleventh, twenty twenty-one to address comments from the planning commission and neighboring property owners. The applicant also submitted revised plans, date stamped December twenty-third, twenty twenty. And the changes from those plans are summarized in the staff report. A rooftop noise assessment and rooftop noise assessment supplement were prepared by Salter, which is an acoustical consultant. These analyze potential noise impacts from rooftop mechanical equipment noise levels to the surrounding property lines and audibility of speech from people using rooftop open space. The acoustical staff of First Carbon Solutions, which prepared the environmental review for the project, reviewed the Salter analysis and confirmed its use of industry standard practices and methodologies for the analysis of the proposed amendments, potential impacts related to noise. Details are summarized in the staff report and representatives from both Salter and First Carbon Solutions are available to answer questions at tonight's meeting. Because noise levels associated with mechanical equipment and with the use of the open space area by residents would not exceed the city's established daytime and nighttime noise performance standards, First Carbon determined that the impacts from operation of the proposed amendment are considered to be less than significant. The conclusions presented in the twenty sixteen initial study and mitigated negative declaration would not change. In summary, the request is for an amendment to the condominium permit to add common open space on the roof of a, an existing eleven-unit residential condominium. The criteria for permitting a residential condominium are listed on page five of the staff report. I'll note the correspondence was sent to the planning commission over the weekend from Mark Haberetz. This email was sent directly to the commissioners from Mr. Haberetz. Also, as mentioned, representatives from both Salter and First Carbon Solutions are available to answer questions. This concludes the staff report summary and I am available for questions of staff.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions at this time? Vice Chair Loftus.
Yeah, I I do want to just ask the question, a couple of questions about the noise ordinances in Burlingame. I I know we have noise ordinances and I don't know precisely what they are, but they're probably something like if if someone's having a big party and you and you don't like it, you can call the police and the police can come out and do something, break up the party or something, something like that in in broad brush, I suspect, right? For
That is correct. So if, you know, if there were to be a violation or a noise disturbance, the police can be called and then the noise ordinance provides the guidelines and standards for enforcement. And then there are also conditions that would go with this proposed amendment. Those are also enforceable. So some of it, there's, you could either go the police route or the enforcement route. Could enforcement if it was perhaps a kind of habitual violation, but if it's an occasional violation, the police are in the position to enforce the noise ordinance and on disturbances.
Okay, and so I, and you may not be able to answer, answer this, Kevin, but I'm gonna speak from experience. If one were to call the police and they showed up at a condo building like this, a multi-unit building and they couldn't get in, what would happen? The party's raging on the top floor and and the police can't, can't get in. They can't get to the people up there. And I've had this happen in San Francisco when I lived there. I called the police for a four o'clock in the morning party and the police couldn't get into the backyard. So nothing was ever done about it. What what happens in these cases? Any idea?
I do not know. I'm looking at the maybe assistance attorney's fan sale may have a little more guidance. I don't want to guess, so.
And my thought is still gonna be a little hypothetical, Vice Chair Loftus, I apologize for that. But typically, if if we do hear a violation, the police, just like a plain sight, if they see a crime happening, if they hear a crime happening, they are able to access it, whether or not there is a person to let them in or a phone call that they can make that's actually going to get them to the top is a different story. But they certainly do have the authority to go up there generally, so.
I figured that was a reach of a question, but you know, I've had it happen to me and so I just wanted to make sure that something could be done if if you know, if there's both habitual habitual problem or a short-term problem. So thanks for those answers.
Commissioner Foff.
Yeah, so I I am familiar with this project going way back. So I first, I first wanted to just ascertain was the open space on the, that I recall on the creek side with the, I think there was a community garden and I don't know, maybe barbecue, but I can't remember. Originally, there was a bocce, boki, bocce ball thing and that was changed to a vegetable garden. Was that ever constructed or there is nothing, what is, what has been done? Has there been anything done on the roof yet? Besides, I guess the solar, did they, they apply for solar? Did they install that? What actually has already been, what is on site? Thank you.
Sure, so the proposed roof, rooftop patio or terrace has not been constructed. The applicant may be in a better position to describe the state of the installation of the other landscape improvements, but what would have been approved in the last version of the design would be what's installed. So you're right, the the amenities did change through the course of the project. Some of that was in response to either concerns about noise again or disturbances as well as as just usability of amenities. But what was finally installed? The the project was final, so what's shown on the final set of plans would would actually be there on site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Torrance.
Yeah, okay, in visiting, sorry, thank you. In visiting the site today, what's in that area where previously was shown the barbecue and and outdoor amenities that that Commissioner Foff was describing, what's there now is just synthetic turf and walkway. And so my understanding, at least reading of the plans, and I guess we can, we can talk to the developer on this. But my reading of the plans is that all of that development, the barbecue area, et cetera, it says outdoor kitchen barbecue area on ground floor in this area is to be deleted. And so I guess my question, this is sort of a hypothetical, I apologize, Kevin, but my question would be if if this outdoor rooftop area is not approved, are they then obligated to go back and build what was originally on the plans previously as amenity and outdoor area or are we accepting just the the outdoor area with the turf as it as it now stands sort of, and maybe you can't answer that without seeing it.
Yeah, I believe it would be what was originally approved would would be the requirement. I think some of those elements were proposed to be deleted in that they would be reproduced on the roof instead.
Okay.
But should this not be approved, we can look at the original approval plans.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any more hands for questions. Then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And there we go. So would the applicant please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project? Okay, Mr. Fellows, you're in. You unmute, you're ready to go.
I tell him, have my, my kid who got, get me onto this thing. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay, my name is Pat Fellows. I'm the applicant and the owner of the property. And as most of you remember, well, I guess we have some new commissioners on here, but this is the third time I brought the roof deck before you. First, I bought it in August twenty-four, twenty twenty. We held the meeting and you had some concerns and then I, I agreed to continuous and we had Nima redo the plans. The last time then was July twelve, twenty twenty-one, was pulled off calendar by the planning staff about two hours before the meeting on that Monday night, I believe. We got three letters from neighbors from behind, factoring to sue the city unless they did a full-blown amendment to the environmental of the neg deck. Although in your package, you had a letter from the, it was in a form, a form letter from the consultant and that the city had asked them to bring forward so we could go to the, go to the meeting. But apparently that wasn't good enough for my neighbors, so they required you to do a full, full-blown addendum. So here we are nineteen months later. And I've paid thirty-four thousand dollars to the city to have the noise and other aspects of the roof deck evaluated by the city's professional consultants. As you can see in your package, there's no additional information provided in the files from where we were at the last canceled meeting. These, and there are, there are three neighbors that have been hounding me on this project for the past ten years. Constantly harassed me as I went through the process getting my original building permits. I used the word harassed very cautiously as I've been for planning commission for the past forty-five years. It's not my first rodeo. And most neighbors are good actors and they have a legitimate concern, which I've always tries to meet. But I can't say the same for these three. I'm reading from some notes I have here. They constantly said to the commissioners in the prior meetings that if they allowed me to build my building, all kinds of disastrous things would happen. Well, the building got built and none of things happened. None of these bad things happened and now they're coming back again, telling you that if you allow the roof deck, there will be thirty-three guests up there plus all of the residents in the building. I think we all have opinions on the truth or falsehood of these statements. They would also have you believe that their intuition is superior to the professional consultants you have hired and I pay thirty-five four thousand dollars for. Although I'm kind of wondering why these three neighbors didn't get a consultant of their own to contest the consultants that you got, but they didn't. F Y I, the city's consultants are in the Zoom meeting tonight, as you've just heard. In the beginning, there were more than three neighbors with their concerns in the beginning, I mean, when we started to build the building. And having listened to the riches, I decided to move the top floor of the building, which was five units and the retention of the trees in the front south side of the lot. Having done so, most of the neighbors were satisfied with the project except for these three whose focus seemed to shift from concerned about the quiet enjoyment of the backyard to just play and stop me at any cost. In conclusion, I think the planning process, as we know it here in this state and which I've participated in for many years, is a great way for all concerned to get together and voice their opinions. And while we're not all going to get what we want, it is hope that at least we all feel that both sides have been listened to. One thing I cannot abide, though, is people abusing the system. And this is a blatant example of this. In a moment, I'll finish up. My prayer is that the commission see what I have done. And I've been responsible and approved my roof deck. I also include for your Perusa lettuce and support of my, from my northerly neighbor, which touches me all the way down Mills Creek and they're in support of my project. Also, my neighbor on the south side supporting my project. I've also included in an email I sent you this afternoon, the presentation I was going to make on the last meeting that was canceled. And if you read that over, it seems like deja vu. I would also like to ask for some time at the end of this meeting to address you further if I need to. As regards to Commissioner Loftus's comment, how do the police get into the building? The building has a, has a, what do you call it, a push-button entry door system. And the police department have a code. So if there's anything else I can, I can add, I'm here to answer your questions.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Fellows. Let's see, do we have any questions for him at this time? Commissioner Foff.
Uh, yes, is it Mr. Fellows?
Yes, it's Pat.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Fellows. Yes, um, I I I just wanted to ask, what, why did you choose not to construct the amenities on the, that had been approved originally on, near the creek?
Well, the reason we we decided not to put them in there, my neighbor next door who approved of the roof deck going up there, wasn't very happy to have all that going on next to his house. It's right on his level. And I think putting it on the roof is, it's, it's, it's bright and airy. It's up there. It's out of everybody's way.
Uh, so can I continue? It's okay. I'm trying to to comment rather than, or no, to ask questions rather than comment, but and the, I see you moved the, you originally, you had shifted the, the air conditioning and such material all towards El Camino. That's good. And did you, have you put the, are the solar units installed where I can see them on the plan or they are not, those are not done yet?
They're not installed at this time, but going in the back of that area, if you look at the plan, that whole section back there will be basically covered by silver.
Okay, then I'm done with my, my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Torrance.
Yeah, Mr. Fellows, just one initial question. The, what's the status of the, of the? Are the, are the units occupied, operational and and mechanical units running, et cetera?
Everything has been, everything has been up and running since about mid of December. Everything has been, everything has been up and running since about mid of December. And the units on the roof are heat pumps. So it's, you know, in in most cases, they would be air conditioners, and they don't even run in the in the summertime. These are heat pumps. They run summer and winter.
Okay, so all the units have been sold already?
They're all, they're not sold. They're all that I own the building still.
Okay.
They're all rented.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Vice Chair Loftus.
So because this feels to me like it's going to hinge on a noise issue, can can we ask for the consultant to walk us through the process? I mean, I've been through this before, and it's a complicated process, and I'd love to hear the consultant, Charles Salter, walk us through the process of this industry standard process of analyzing that rooftop noise issue. Because I think it will, it's it's important that everyone understand that.
Okay, Mr. Salter. I believe that you're on and ready to go.
Here I am, yes. So for this project, there are two independent noise considerations. One is the air conditioning equipment, and the city has a property line noise standard, and if you read the report, you see that we predict that the noise based on the manufacturer's data will be below the city noise limit and thus in compliance with the city standards. So so that's one issue. The other issue is having people on the roof and having them disturb the neighbors. So that's not covered under the city code. But nevertheless, it's an issue for the neighbors. So I evaluated that, assuming somebody's talking in loud voice on the roof, seventy five decibels at a distance of and I extrapolated that sound level to the neighbors, and in the report, my calculations indicate that the speaking noise, loud speaking noise, will be inaudible. So the neighbors, if they're outdoors at the property line, trying to hear what's going on at nine PM, will not detect that conversational speech. And so then I concluded that there'd be no noise impact, no adverse effect on the neighbors.
So there was a, the the reason I asked the the question was, there's a there is a term used in here that I don't see any record, I don't see any measurement, though I know you must have taken it. What I really wanted to get at is how you establish ambient noise levels? Because I know that's done, it'd be useful to walk through that for.
Yes, gladly. We conduct acoustical measurements on the southwest end of the property for a total of five days. Twenty four hours a day, five days. And so we based our analysis on the minimum ambient.
And and did you, is that measurement made at the property line? Where's the where's?
Yes, exactly. If you look at the report, you'll see a photograph of our noise monitor up in a tree. So we wanted to get a high up to quantify the noise exposure for the neighbors.
And so as I understand it, the process really boils down to measuring ambient noise for some period of time, so you get a good number at the property line, and then taking the manufacturer's data for the mechanical equipment and using scientific, using equations that are pretty well-known, you measure what that, how far that that noise diminishes to the property line, and then you've done the same thing for loud speech on the on the roof, right? And you've measured if it starts out at at this level at the roof line, it will be at this level when it reaches that property line and not exceeding the ambient noise level as it exists, as you measured it, right?
Correct. That what what you said is is accurate.
And did you give any consideration to music played on the roof?
That was something that I discussed, because obviously, music can be very loud, and I noticed in the city conditions, there's a limit of seventy decibels of noise on the roof. And so the music noise is limited based on my understanding of the city conditions, because to your point, clearly, very loud music could disturb people far away, and that has to be limited, and I believe it is limited.
And and so the noise, the the sound levels of the music are actually below loud talking.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dave, do we have any other questions for either Mr. Fellows or Mr. Salter? Okay, great. Then I will go ahead and go to the public. There's anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Now would be that time. Please raise your hand. Okay, not, oh, we have one, it looks like. Okay, you're in the meeting. If you unmute, you're ready to go. A little bit.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's Andreas Rude Stenzel. I live in the property next door to Pat Fellow's place on El Camino. I'm the one that's living across the creek, so we have maybe a hundred and fifty feet of of, you know, property next to each other. You know, I I I think it's okay to have people on top of the roof, you know, whether they live there or they're gathering for some event. My 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 statement or concern about the the noise would not be so much about how many people are there, but what they're doing, and if it is a, you know, gathering at night or even just two people listening to music, I'm I'm a little worried that it it can just be something that's loud, whether it's music from two people sitting up top. And it, you know, if it if it's something that's occurring again and again, hopefully, there's a way that doesn't involve calling the police, because I hate that, and I think the police hate it, too. Where there's something we can do that you maybe uses technology like these Airbnb noise meters that Pat, maybe you can put in, or maybe you can, you know, take a look at, that would help, you know, kind of automatically notify people that after a certain time of day or after a certain, I guess, decibel level, a light goes on, they get a text or some something, something kind of notifies them that, hey, you're reaching some limit rather than upsetting upsetting the neighbors. We do we do have a a couple trees that kind of separate us from the from the the view of the rooftops, or not we're not so worried about the noise, but I, you know, I'm I'm a landlord and an Airbnb host as well, and I know that there's some technologies out there. I don't know how well they work outside. But I, you know, I would I would like to say, you know, generally, I support the the idea of having a deck that some people can use. I would want limits on the noise, though. That's all.
Great, thank you very much. Does not look like we have any other hands raised. Director Gardner, do we have any text or email messages?
We have two email messages. This first one is signed Anne and Paul Wallach, and it reads, Dear Commissioners, we have been advised to review the mitigated negative declaration for this property. Despite issues mitigated in the document, the applicant pulled the rooftop from his original application so that his project could then be approved. We asked the commissioners to once more give equal review and weight to earlier remarks made by the commissioners themselves, as well as public concerns. To win, the roof, the rooftop space is overly large. It provides much more space than building occupants could require. Instead, it provides room enough for events hosting multitudes. Eleven different entries in the building could host such events. Sorry, eleven different entities in the building could host such events. Next, contrary to the original plans, the majority of the air handlers removed from where they were drawn in the plans to closer to the rear of the building. Mid-deck does not address noise issues regarding relocating the air handlers. Next, inclusion of the kitchen and bathroom encourages overly lengthy occupation of the space on any one occasion. Next is amplified sound equipment was not addressed adequately in the mid-deck. And last, the applicant has assured the commissioners that neighbors would be protected from such nuisances by HOA bylaws. How many owner occupants reside in the building? How many units in reality are rentals owned by the applicant and his partners? What constitutes a legitimate HOA document, which could protect neighbors as the applicant asserts? Thank you for consideration of these comments, and that is signed Anne and Paul Wallach. And then the other email we've received is signed Athan Rebello's, and it reads, this is a beautiful building. I think that the outdoor rooftop gathering space is lovely, and it precisely fits the Berlin game lifestyle. I fully support the open space on the roof. Best, Athan Rebello's. Those are the two email correspondence we've received on this application.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Commissioner Foff?
Um, well, first, first, the good news, I I follow this enough to appreciate that what Mr. Fellows did for the the whole project, retaining the trees, bringing it leveled down, I'm well aware of all that. I I am sympathetic about the noise, I have to say. I I'm just thinking of the project of the street for me, which is being built right now. It is fifty three thousand square foot parcel of conglomerate pieces, and yours is nineteen four. Their rooftop, they originally asked for, this is a hundred and twenty eight units, they asked for six thousand square feet. The commissioners had them pare it down to four, and they had them put it quite far away from where the existing residents were on the the rest of the block. And so I I just thought, rather than be, I I'm just going to suggest something, and I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I'm just going to say it so this doesn't go on all night. I made a ratio, because I feel like this should be, we should be consistent with what we do. If I just take a ratio to what was done with a much larger project, and you're asking for almost three thousand, well, well, let's see, twenty nine hundred. I come out to a roof deck that's smaller, it's the same ratio would be one thousand eight hundred and sixty three. It's still quite large. But if you pushed it towards El Camino, you know, I can, I could see how that's further away from folks, you know, it's true. Sometimes you get two people on a roof that are repairing a roof, and it's a hundred feet away, and you can just hear them. It's it's horrible. I I do understand that, and you don't want to call the police all the time. So I I do think it's a concern, and I I understand sort of this creep, a creep that happens on these projects where they they keep changing over time, and so I'm I'm tending to think, you know, okay, but it it's too big. It's just too big. So that doesn't solve all the problems, but that's that's sort of the way I'm thinking about it right now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tronos.
Thank you. Well, I've been I've been torn over this issue for several different reasons. On the one hand, you know, I want I want to see projects work to the best of of their ability and to the best of our ability to to help craft and and create projects that that work well. The the site is constrained. You know, I I think that the the occupants, whether they're tenants or whether they're owners, they have a right to expect some outdoor opens, access to some outdoor open space. In fact, that's part of our ordinances in terms of of how we review projects and what we require to be included. You know, so I want to see projects like this work. You know, I I think it's generally beneficial to take advantage of rooftop spaces when we can. We've seen various different projects that have done so successfully, including this developer's project further down on El Camino Real closer to Broadway that appears to be working rather well. So that said, my concerns were in terms of the entitlement process for this and and how and when we reviewed it, and taking into considerations the neighbors' concerns because of this property and its proximity backing up to a single-family residential neighborhood. Sorry, we've got a train going by. I think we had to be sensitive to the issues that could arise from a rooftop area like this. So I don't, what I don't want to see is a rooftop area approved like this, and then have it be create some difficulty for neighbors, and therefore sort of torpedo a process for looking at rooftop developments elsewhere as we review projects and as they come forward. So moving forward, what we asked for was some additional analysis. We asked for some sound analysis and to be included with the environmental review. And that said, I cannot think personally of any greater better authority and anybody more renowned than Charles Salter himself, taking a look at this project for us. You know, his firm has been around for decades. You know, I've I've I'm very familiar with with their work, use their services on occasion. And I'm I'm glad to see that we had, you know, their highest authority taking a look at this for us and and for the for the developer. You know, I have to, I have to defer to that professional expertise. And so I'm I'm leaning towards approving of this. I understand what Commissioner Foff was saying in terms of some ratio. The issue that I have, though, is that you then have to, you have to look at all open areas related to to any given project, and, you know, not just rooftop areas, but look at other areas that are included with a project. This project, this would be it, you know, because, you know, if if that area down on the ground floor, which I get it, it's immediately adjacent to another neighbor. If that's not developed, it's just a patch of turf right now. They'd have to go back and and fully develop that barbecue area, bocce court, or whatever it was that that could fit in that space. So I think that this is a a good opportunity to take advantage of that area up up on the roof and pulling it away from the neighbors as the way it's been designed. What I'd like to see happen if this moves forward is to try to find some way to have this come back before us, have some sort of review after a year's time or two years' time, whatever the right timeframe is, so that we can reassess the approval on this and see if there are any issues that have come up. You know, I I it's it's difficult to just say, let's let it happen and let code enforcement and the police take care of it. I think we ought to obligate ourselves to have this come back for review and see how it's been performing after a certain amount of time. We've done that on other approvals. Granted, they're more for for use permits, but I'd like to think that we could craft some way if Director Gardner and the city attorney would agree to have this come back before us for some kind of review, if if it moves forward with approval. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Loftus.
I'm glad Commissioner Turonis went first because he he did a good job of sort of summarizing where I am as well. You know, it's really important, I think that was right for the neighbors to ask for the, you know, some proof. And I feel the same way about Mr. Salter's firm. I've used them as well in the past. And I, the reason I had the asked that he walked through this was because it's important to understand everyone, for everyone to understand, this is this is a scientific process, and it's done the same way all the time. And, you know, my sense is that reducing the size of the rooftop is not going to reduce the reducing the size of the rooftop is not going to reduce the number of decibels at the rooftop. If you have a space that's a hundred square feet and you get people up there talking, you're going to get the same sort of noise that you get when there's people in a larger space. You know, by and large. Uh, and so I don't think that reducing the size is the most important thing, what is important is uh, taking measures to attenuate as best you can. Um, you know, the disturbance that might arise now and again uh, for very sensitive people, if I'm told that the uh, levels at the property line are no higher than ambient, ambient uh, sound, then that sounds reasonable to me. It's a hundred and thirty-four feet to the back of a house, I don't know exactly how far it is to the property line, but it looks like it's maybe ninety or something like that, eighty-five or something. Um, I think the, the, the developer has and the team have done their due diligence and it feels approvable to me. Um, and this is a very, very common uh, typology now, you know, the multifamily residential with rooftop space. And the fact that it backs up to residential neighborhood is a concern, but I think for me, those concerns have been addressed. And I suspect that El Camino is louder than the rooftop will be. The, the noise of traffic on El Camino, so uh, this feels, this feels provable to me and I think that my concerns have been addressed and I, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Tromas that we ought to have this come back uh, the, so that we prove to ourselves that we've made the right decision and um, and we know what to do in the future.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Camarado? No?
I have nothing to add. I think uh, Commissioner Toronis and Commissioner Loftus have said it very nicely, so.
Okay. Uh, so, couple of different areas for me. Um, when this came before us before, it was a blank slate roof with a bunch of space and, and no articulation for furniture and everything else. And I think that we asked that the applicant maybe do a little bit more with that so that we would have a better vision on the use of the space. And I think that they've done it well. Uh, and I appreciate the effort being put into that. I think that the extra effort put into the consultants um, needs to be taken into consideration and um, and I think that they've done that as well. So I find this very approvable. Um, you know, we have uh, multifamily all up and down El Camino Real, backing up to Balboa and Albemarle. And, you know, that is going to continue forever and it's, you know, we're doing more multifamily and that is just the way it's gonna be. So I, I think that this one's a good one to go. Um, and so, do we have a motion?
Mister Chair, I'll move, I move that we approve the project with the findings in the staff report and with the uh, requirements of the staff report.
I'll, I'll second the current motion, but could I ask if we could add a condition in regards to coming back for, for some kind of review? And before we do that, if we could get some input from Director Gardner or Assistant Attorney Spanso.
Director Gardner, I can go first. Thank you, Commissioner Tronist for, for bringing us in. I think that would be a, a difficult thing to do, to have a temporary use permit that is essentially granting a land use right and then having reviewed it, it might set a precedent, that's not something we want to do. However, I think adding an element that staff come back and report to you how, how it is going is something that we could certainly do. And that you can use that as a way to ensure that we're understanding the ramifications of what's happening. So that would be my suggestion if the planning commission desires.
I see.
I would, I would fold that into my motion then. I think all we're looking for is, is feedback.
Also mentioned, uh, condition number two restricts uh, use of the space to um, eight AM to nine PM and seventy decibels and those are objective standards that can be um, confirmed, so staff can monitor that. Um, and, and I know we don't, you know, always wanna rely on code enforcement, but those are pretty um, those are pretty clear standards and um, should they um, that, that is something that is, is uh, easier to enforce than something like a temporary permit.
Okay, so just to be clear, Vice Chair Loftus, are we saying then as a added, um, I don't know if it's a condition or not, but that there would just be some report from staff approximately one year's time after completion of the rooftop deck?
Yeah.
Just a report, but not that the applicant has to come back.
That's right, just to report.
Okay, I, I, I still second the motion.
Okay, uh, I, and I think that that's a good idea only from the standpoint, it gives us as a commission feedback so that we can make more intelligent decisions in the future on items that don't come before us very frequently. Uh, so I think that's a plus. Uh, so we have a motion by uh, Vice Chair Loftus and a second by Commissioner Toronos, any further discussion? Excellent, let's vote.
Commissioner Camarado?
Aye.
Commissioner Foff?
No.
Commissioner Toronos?
Aye.
Vice Chair Loftus?
Aye.
And Chair Schmidt?
Oh, I. Motion carries four, one, zero, two. Uh, an action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within ten days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by five PM on the tenth day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of seven hundred and eight dollars, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item eight E, two-twenty Park Road. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, the applicant is requesting a sign variance for proposed signs on a previously approved office retail development project at two-twenty Park Road, so named HMU. This sign variance application includes two signs on each of the four building facades for a total of eight signs. The building facades have frontages along Park Road, Lorton Avenue, the future town square and the rear of existing buildings along Howard Avenue. The planning commission first reviewed this application for the signed variance on February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-two and the commission had several comments and concerns. The applicant submitted response letter dated March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two and revised plans. They stamped March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two to address the planning commission's concerns and comments. Uh, the staff report includes a summary of the changes made to the application since the February twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, staff notes that with the proposed changes, two previous requests for sign variances have been eliminated. Uh, the sign variance for a single sign exceeding sixty square feet is no longer required since all signs measure less than sixty square feet in area. Uh, the applicant has a presentation prepared, but in summary, the following variances are requested. Sign height exceeding twenty-four feet. Uh, sign, signs exceeding fifty-five percent of the vertical dimension of the sign band. And two proposed wall signs on the southeast elevation require approval by the planning commission for fine, for signs which immediately abut an adjacent privately owned parcel. And the required findings for assigned variants are found on page four of the staff report. Uh, the, the applicant has a presentation and will be available for questions, but first I'm available for questions of staff.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing none, then I'm gonna go ahead and open up a public hearing and uh, will the applicant please step forward, state your name and anything you'd like to add about your project? Good evening. Alex, we can't hear you. Oh, there you are.
Hi, everyone. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, Kevin, would you be able to pull up the presentation? Great, thank you. Uh, nice to see everyone again. My name is Alex Labadus, I'm here on behalf of Dostar Development and Sarah Regis to discuss signage for two-twenty Park. I'm also joined by Molly Ricker with Dostar Development and Andrew Turco with Sarah Regis, as well as Dixon Kaiser and Howard Curtis of New Group and Ted Court, of course, and Sarah Hady Architects, who is the architect for the building. First off, thank you for all your feedback last month. You challenged us to think more about how the signage and the architecture are working together and we think that's led to a better overall design. We also heard some questions about why this signage is so important for office tenants. Given how high-end the downtown and the building are, we're pursuing a number of established firms for the building, including law firms, venture capital and financial technology. For those types of firms, building signage is important enough that it could even be the difference between choosing one building over another. It's part of their identity and a way for them to connect to a location. We're proud of two-twenty Park and the energy it's gonna bring to this part of the downtown and I'm sure these firms will feel the same. And we think the signage plan we're presenting tonight gives us the best opportunity to draw these types of tenants by offering attractive signs that work well with the building's architecture. As we talked about last meeting, uh, two-twenty Park is a complex project. It has a mix of uses, historic rehabilitation and historic height variance. The signage area below twenty-four feet is gonna be used primarily for retail and wayfinding, which is why we proposed to locate the office signs higher on the building. Without a height variance, we need to squeeze all the office signs into this twenty-four foot area, which you can see on the slide here, would start to look pretty cluttered. Next slide, please. We heard you loud and clear last meeting that you wanted to find a new way for the architecture to be visible through the signage. As you'll see in the new design, the panels behind the signs have been removed. This also simplifies our variance since those panels were the reason we needed two of the variances from the previous design. We also heard you like a better understanding of how different tenant colors will look on the building and what the illumination will look like for tenants who choose to have illuminated signage. In a minute, we'll show you exhibits and images to provide more detail on both. For the redesigned signage, we're asking for approval of two variances. The first is to exceed the twenty-four foot height limit, given the unique scale and architecture of the building. And the second is to allow the signs to go up to seventy-five percent of the height of the architectural plane, which is in line with the new signage code. Practically speaking, we're requesting second variance because if the signs are higher up in the building, they'll be further away from the person viewing it. So this would allow the ladders on the signs to be a little taller to make sure they're easy to read. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dixon to go through the details in the new design.
Thanks, Alex, and uh, thanks, everyone. Uh, good to be back with you all and uh, as Alex had said, um, we appreciate the feedback from the last meeting and uh, feel that you know, again, as we'd said before, as a team, we came together, design team, to really figure out how we can respond best to the comments that you made. I think we've come out with a much better uh, program now. And so what we're going to do tonight, very similar to what we did last time, we're gonna walk you through the eight locations, but I think first of all, what we'd like to do is really kind of start by taking a look at the signs themselves. And so if we can go to the next slide, um, what we've done uh, to really address one of the key comments from last time was uh, that we did not wanna cover up any of the architectural detail. So what we've done is move forward on one of the suggestions uh, that we all talked about was a rail system. And so uh, the idea being that we can integrate a rail system into all locations and have that rail system, but be approximately four inch by four inch, uh, painted to match the color of the architecture itself to minimize its visibility. But then be able to use that as an anchor point for transparent logos, when I say transparent, uh, individual, individual channel letters that can be applied uh, along with any kind of bug for a particular tenant, uh, mounted onto that rail system, uh, allowing the background to not be covered up and what have you. Um, and sometimes, you know, we need to create the ability for some flexibility with some identities. So therefore, uh, the ability to either rest directly on top of the rail system or uh, to be uh, elevated ever so slightly with, with pin mounts or vertical posts as we have them indicated. So um, in all of the drawings you're gonna see tonight, we've tried to replicate some colors that, you know, maybe you might find a tenant that's interested in, in occupying this building might have with their identity. So um, again, we've arbitrarily selected some colors that you'll see as we get further into the presentation. I think illumination was something that we spoke about last time, so if we can go to the next slide. Um, I think we, we spoke about this idea of, of day-night film, um, which just for, for everyone, once again, the idea being that um, a perforated vinyl uh, is, has the ability to read, as in this particular case, red during the daytime, it's perforated, so then at night, a light, lighting glow, LED lighting can actually come through the face of these letterforms for a nice, clean illumination. And I'll say that um, what's key here is we wanna make sure that, that, you know, any lighting that gets integrated within these signs uh, really is kind of set by a, a building standard, lighting standard. Um, we obviously don't want these things to be, you know, glaring, uh, we want it to be a little more of a soft light, but uh, we have the ability to dial that in uh, with the technology of LEDs and what have you. So uh, I think moving on to the next slide, what we've done similar to what you saw last time, albeit, I think last time you'd said, hey, well, gosh, you guys are showing tenant here for every single location, we get it. So what we wanted to do is again, be able to start showing you, you know, some realm of possibility of how this rail system would work, how these identities that we've chosen some arbitrary colors to uh, integrate into the architecture and apply them to the elevation. So here we are, southwest facade, Park Road, across the street, looking back at the building, locations one and two. Uh, next slide, we're jumping over the building onto Lorton Avenue, um, again, across the street, looking up at the building uh, at the various uh, locations three and four. And next slide, now we're down on Howard, uh, looking back at the building again, the IDs on the rail system, next slide. Uh, locations seven and eight, and, and here we are, the northwest facade, we're standing in the town square or trying to approximate that, looking back up at the building at location seven and eight. And um, so where that brings us is, is really what Alex had, had referenced before, we're really looking at, at two requested variances um, that really focus on, again, mounting heights of all of these signs, which vary from fifty-seven to seventy-one feet above finished grade. So that's really kind of the first variance. And then next slide, the um, second variance was really exceeding the fifty-five percent of a vertical band. And um, we're within the updated code limit of seventy-five percent, the way we've developed this at this point. And so um, then really kind of the next slide, wanted to, to really again, have the opportunity to look at all of these in context of, of this last slide here. But then also invite Molly to, to make some statements about the project as well at this point.
Um, thanks Dixon. Uh, I, I just wanted to jump in um, at the end to offer a few kind of words in closing. Um, to give a little more kind of the owner and landlord's perspective um, and talk about and how we actually manage the signs uh, like this in practice. Um, I do wanna reiterate, you know, signage is a real topic when we're marketing out there to potential office tenants. Um, and frankly, for this project, i- in some ways even e- even more so because uh, if you recall, the office lobby itself is quite subordinate um, to the project. It's not typical to set it so far back off the street. It, it was the right thing to do for this project because of the historic post office, but it, it does make um, the ability to talk to tenants about potential building signage even more important. Um, and secondly, in terms of how we actually implement signage like this, so in addition to tenants being required to, of course, follow, you know, city permitting processes for signage, both under some like this and the entirety of the rest of the signage code. Um, it's something that is, is specifically negotiated within the lease. Uh, what that means is that not all office tenants uh, get the right to exterior building signage. Um, those that do get the right to install sign, assigned in a specific place that is designated by the landlord in the lease on the building. Um, and you know, how many locations we end up giving to uh, potential tenants um, could really vary. And then all signage is subject to a, a much broader landlord um, master signage program that has much more detail than here, includes interior building signage, exterior signage, um, everything and that, that's um, uh, been managed by property management. Um, it, you know, frankly, I, I'm not sure that it's probably not that likely, I think that we'll end up um, with signs in all eight of these locations as I um, am looking at floor plans and we're talking to tenants. Um, you know, for us, kind of two locations per frontage felt like it gives us the right amount of flexibility. Um, you know, we, we don't know yet because we obviously don't have, um, don't have those office You know, we don't know yet because we obviously don't have, don't have those office tenants, but we are, we're starting to have some exciting, albeit, early conversations now that we're, you know, under construction and the post office is moved and we're starting to dig. Actually, we have a, we have a tenant presentation next week with a great, you know, high quality firm that we are trying to lure away from another peninsula location. And, you know, for a practical matter, if, for instance, we got your support tonight, in the morning, we will be changing the cover page of that presentation to put their sign on one of the locations because I think they would take an entire floor and that's a size tenant who we would love to show that to. But it would be incredibly valuable to have the flexibility to use these potential signage locations as, you know, as a tool as we work to try to attract the best tenants, you know, to hopefully call downtown Berlin, gain their new home. So thanks so much for your time and thanks for your feedback.
Sorry, mute button moved. Okay, do you guys have any, is there anybody else that needs to go or are we good? Molly, are you last? Okay. Great. Do we have any questions for the team? Vice Chair Loftus.
Yeah, I want to ask a question just to reiterate what I think I just heard. And that is, you don't know how many signs will be there. It could be two, it could be eight. And you won't know that until you figure out how many tenants are in the space, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a detailed question. I noticed the raceway being called out as a four by four. I understand that completely, but does the face of that raceway stick out in front of the face of the building that it is up against? You know, there's some relief in there. I understand that from the drawing. I just don't know how much relief. And then does the face of the raceway end up still behind the face of that relief?
No, the raceways, it's the rails pulled out and comes out and around the the column and what have you, the detail. Yeah. So it's portraying out off the face, proud of the the face and the detailing in the architecture.
So those two, the verticals on either end of the raceway sit behind it is what you're saying?
Correct. You're, yeah, you're referring left and right. Correct. Yes.
Okay. And I didn't, I didn't notice in there, is there a light intensity standard that you're going to put in so that when at night, all of them are actually the same color?
Yeah, we're, I referenced in today's presentation, kind of a building standard so that everything is consistent. So you're not, don't have one that's brighter than the other. So, yes.
Well, I'm actually also concerned that one's more yellow than the other. So I would like to see that part of your signage program has a Kelvin scale for that. I understand the different colors for the day, but I think it would look terrible if we had two signs on the same face using drastically different degrees.
Yeah. And then just to clarify, that is the intent right now, is that they, they would all be the same, the same degree Kelvin for all signs. There would be a set building standard for that.
Perfect. Okay, that took care of my questions. Any others? No, then I'll go out to the public and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this item. Raise your hand. Seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, Vice Chair Loftus.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you for hearing our concerns about the architecture. I think that the changes that we're seeing do a lot to maintain the integrity of the architecture. As you could tell, we were all quite concerned about it at the last meeting for various highly detailed reasons, but I think that for me, this addresses all of those concerns. So I appreciate your work in moving this forward.
Okay, Commissioner Camerano.
Yeah, I agree. I thank you for going the extra mile on this and coming back to us with some options. I agree with Commissioner Chair Schmidt regarding the light color. That's one of my biggest pet peeves in my own house. And so just please keep everything the same color, illuminated the same color. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Tronos.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion. That's okay.
Can I make a statement first?
Absolutely. Back out.
No, it's okay. I, I only wanted to say that that projection detail on the end is important. It's not something that I need to drive through here, but as, as an architect and a professional in this, doing this, looking at that corner and how it ends is important. And so I would encourage you guys to look at that as you develop the final portions of your signage program. So Commissioner Tronos, I will come back to you and you can do what you want to do. Or do you have a statement or?
Yeah, well, two. One, one is, just get clarified because I'm hearing two different things. And I'm not a light person. Are you saying is the, I'm sorry, I've forgotten his name, the Seinfeld. Is he, is he, are you saying that at night, these shall all turn the same color, or you're saying they shall all turn the same intensity at night? I'm not really understanding what you're saying. That's the first thing.
I can clarify that for you.
Okay.
He's saying the same brightness.
Okay.
So that it's not one that is screaming and one is demure. And we're going to use the same color. So you're not going to get a bright white and a yellow white at night.
But you could get a red and a white. Oh, no.
Not at night.
Got it.
At night, the, the white portion of the film shows brighter than the color and the color goes away. During the day, you only see the color and you don't see the white spots.
Okay, that is, that's great. And I also want to just comment that I agree with Chair Schmidt about the detail. Maybe that those ends can be rounded or something. I don't know. Something very fine that would look like it was on purpose. The ends of the pole or whatever you're using, the wood. And I, I did want to ask if, and maybe it's too early to ask this. I don't know. I really think you've done a great job. But going back to setting precedents regarding tall buildings in our downtowns, not, not talking about the B side or anything, this is kind of different and it's new for us to have the sign up so high. Is there a way that we can write into the paperwork that this was done because they, being a historic involving, a project involving a historic site that or building that they did not want to put the signage in certain areas down and damage the look, the integrity of the building or, and have too much around it. And therefore, out of need, they needed to put them above that so that we're, so that we're already setting a precedent that there is a reason why this was done, not that every tall building comes and says, well, we want that too. That's what I'm mainly worried about. So I'm asking, is there something, staff level, that can be done where people know, oh, that, you know, maybe it encourages others to do something with historic structures. I don't know. That's my question.
So Commissioner Foff, I can provide a response. It's the most straightforward thing is that that could be a finding of the planning commission to do. Choose to approve this application that can be put on in the record so that one of the findings that the commission would be making, doesn't have to be part of the motion, but you're already having the discussion. So you know, structurally, somebody could make a motion and then when there's discussion of the motion, you could restate those findings as such, and then that becomes part of the official record.
Thank you.
Okay. Does that not leave us at making a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There you go. Commissioner Charles.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the variance based on the suggested findings in the staff report. And specifically, the unique characteristics, unique circumstances and characteristics of the site, including both the historic preservation of the post office as well as the culvert, which created a situation where the building height had to be what it had to be, and now therefore a signage program is appropriate via variance of this sort.
A second.
Great. So motion by Commissioner Tronos, second by Commissioner Foff. Did that cover everything you wanted to get in there?
Yes.
Fabulous. Okay, then let's vote.
Commissioner Camerano.
Aye.
Commissioner Foff.
Aye.
Commissioner Tronos.
Aye.
Vice Chair Loftus.
Aye.
And Chair Schmidt.
Aye. Motion carries 5002. An action by the plant, oops. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by 5:00 PM on the 10th date, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $708, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay, that concludes our action items for the evening. And we're moving on to design review study items. And for items nine A and nine B, I will be recusing myself and handing it over to Vice Chair Loftus.
I'll keep the chair warm for you.
Thank you, sir.
So let's move on to item nine A in the design review study. If you are the, that's 1617 Ralston Avenue. If you are the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners unable to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications about this project? I see none. I hear none. Let the record note, all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, the subject property is an interior lot with an existing two-story single unit dwelling and an attached garage. And the project proposes first and second story additions to the existing house. With the application, the number of the bedrooms in the main dwelling will actually decrease from five to four bedrooms. And so there, there's button required covered parking space, and that's provided in the existing attached garage. Now, this application is before the commission is a design review study item. And so that concludes the staff report and I'm available for questions of staff if you have them.
Thank you. Has anyone got any questions for staff? Looks like no questions for staff. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and anything else you would like to add about your project?
Hello.
Lou.
Can you hear me? Great.
Can.
My name is Bob Bryant. I'm with Flory Bryant Design Group. We're the designers of the project. We've been working pretty closely with Fazia to get us to this point. And just wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions. I'm here if you have any questions.
Oh, there you are.
And well, looking forward to hearing your comments.
Okay, are there any questions for the applicant? Wow, I see no questions for the applicant. That's very unusual.
Okay.
I don't have any questions either.
Great.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak about this project? Were any comments received through email or chat?
No, Vice Chair Loftus, no comments via email.
Okay, I'm going to then close the public hearing. Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Foff.
Yeah, um, first of all, this definitely shows the difference between a design reviewed project and one that was not. And it definitely shows. My comment, first, I'm going to deal with the, the front facade. And I'm guessing your client really liked the quadra, is it a quadrifile? Think that's the thing in the, in, in the upper floor, the window. Is it a quadrifile? Yes, thank you. So let's just say that's the element that stays. Together with the, the door, I'm finding this door, as well as even the old door, they look very in a very narrow area. It looks squished in. And I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if it would be possible maybe to take the, to, to not do this, those side lights, maybe a wide door, but not take the entire, what looks to me as the entire space available, which is kind of tunnel-like anyway, for, and fill it completely up. Maybe it would be less crowded if it were pulled in and you know, the, the shape is another thing, maybe a different shape. I'm not sure if that's maybe more subjective, but I, I just find that that caught my eye. Something was bothering me there. And then the question, I had a question. Actually, on this, it looks like on the back and on the sides. And those are existing plain windows. And I'm going to make a leap that the reason that these were not maybe scheduled to be changed out to the more intricate ones on the front is, is to keep costs down. Is that, is that a good leap?
Are you asking a question of the applicant?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, is that the reason? Because it looks like the front and the, the back and the sides don't match. And I know.
I'd say, you know, we, we already did the question thing of the applicant. Nobody had any questions.
Sorry.
Maybe you should just make, maybe it's.
Making a comment. I'm making.
Make it a, make it a comment and say, this bothers me for this reason.
It looks, it looks a little strange. I, you know, and probably it's because it, you don't want to change them out, but it, it looks a little, they don't go together. The fronts could look very nice if, you know, you work on some details, but I'm, I'm just, that, that's my comment. It doesn't kind of hang together for me.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Tronos.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I didn't have too many, I didn't have any questions. Mainly because I think we have kind of a unique situation here where we have an applicant who's working with an existing house. You know, they're making some alterations, doing some additions. The only thing before us is design review. And so we have kind of a unique situation, at least in my mind, where we have an existing house that's kind of plain and, and ordinary and nondescript. And they're making it better. And, you know, in my mind, I think that there's little, there's nits we could, might pick, but I, I kind of hesitate making the good the enemy of the perfect. You know, I, I, I commend them for working with the existing conditions. I like the fact that they're adding some additional charm and detail with the divided light windows on the front facade, the simulated carriage doors, the wood shutters, the timber sills, et cetera. So, you know, I think all in all, it, it's making for a well-crafted project, you know, if it were from the ground up, you know, we might be viewing it a little bit differently, but they're working with existing conditions. So, you know, I actually think it's a fairly nice project and you know, within the context of it, of itself, it, it works well. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Camerano.
Yeah, I think the only thing I have is, I'm wondering if the applicant would be open to possibly putting some type of roof over the left sided. over the left-sided elevation, um, over that door that's leading into the house. It's not a deal breaker, but just kind of thought that that might be a nice little touch there.
Okay. Yeah, I will say that I had, um, a similar feeling about that door. It feels lonely out there in the middle of that wall. Um, it does feel like, uh, the, the front of the project, I, I think, Commissioner Trones is right, it's much improved over the existing front, and it's, it's got, it, it, there's charm proposed where there's no charm right now. And that's a nice thing, and it feels like the, uh, the other facades are, uh, you know, just left out in the cold a little bit, and I wonder if the applicant wouldn't consider, um, you know, looking at, um, trying to bring a little bit more detail to those facades. But, uh, as Commissioner Trones says, we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, and it is being made better, and it is a very plain building, um, a plain building being made better, and so, you know, there's only so much, I think it's fair of us to ask, since the work that's being done is sort of limited and, you know, uh, it's not being degraded, the house is not being degraded, but I do think the, by the, when the applicant comes back, they probably should look at a little bit more detail on those, on those other facades, uh, likely some sort of awning over that door, some sort of roof over that door. But in general, I, I think it's not a bad project, it's, um, it's certainly not, um, as I said, it's not degrading the existing house. A- anyone else got any, uh, comments? Does that feel right? Okay, then, um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion, Vice Chair Loftus. Yeah, I'll make a motion to bring this back on regular action when our comments have been addressed. Um, you know, I don't want to, you know, halt or arrest any revisiting of the, of the side or, or rear, uh, has been, has, has been suggested by other commissioners. Um, just based on my comments, I, I agree with what you're saying. So if they could revisit those and see if there's some additional articulation, I think that would be great. But otherwise, a motion to bring this back on regular action.
Second.
Okay, so we have a commission, uh, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Trones and a second by Commissioner Foff to bring this back to regular action. Could we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Camerato.
Aye.
Commissioner Foff.
Aye.
Commissioner Torrance.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Loftus.
Aye. So the motion passes, uh, four zero zero three, is that right? And there is.
Four zero one.
Four zero, sorry, four zero one two. My, my bad. I've never been able to do that well. Um, and this motion is not appealable. So with that, uh, Chair Smith is still out on the next item, which is item nine B three oh nine Chapin Lane. Uh, if you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners, uh, were any commissioners unable to visit the project site, or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? No, we're good. Now let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. May we hear the staff report, please?
Yes, the property, um, is an interior lot, and it currently has an existing two-story single unit dwelling with a detached garage. Project includes first and second story additions and also relocating the detached garage at the rear, um, to the rear of the lot. The new garage provides the required two covered parking spaces for the proposed five-bedroom main dwelling. Design review criteria are listed in the staff report for the commission's reference, and I'm free to take any questions of staff.
Commissioner Loftus, you're muted still.
Oh, I did that perfectly too. Um, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would the applicant, please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project?
Uh, good evening, Commissioner, uh, Tim Merdans, uh, designer along with, uh, Kent and Kelly. Um, I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, you know, the owners wanted to kind of, kind of bring back probably what that house used to be before it got crudely remodeled, probably in the eighties. Um, and, um, you know, we've kept, we've kept the massing, you know, within all the envelopes. We've kind of worked with the privacy for the neighbors and for the owners themselves, kind of kept uh, uh, as many of the windows as possible, being more privacy oriented, and trying to keep a large yard, which, you know, is a huge asset for them. They have a slightly larger lot than normal Burlingame, uh, you know, houses. Um, you know, we're working on colors right now. That 3D that you're seeing is probably a little off, but, um, you know, we're working on that, um. You know, if you have any questions, um, we're here, um, and also the owners are here, um, um, to answer any of your questions. Um, Kent, Kelly, do you want to say anything? This, now's the time.
Hi, um, Kent Kokas, how, thank you very much, Commissioners, for your time. Um, you know, I and my family have been in Burlingame for a very long time, probably. Uh, we, uh, I grew up on a house on Pepper in Burlingame, and that was a family home for, you know, nearly 50 years. I love Burlingame. Um, I have a great deal of respect for architecture, and I'm committed, of course, to retaining the look and the feel of this community. And I think Tim is right, we're staying with traditional craftsman style home, the simple clean lines with high quality material. And honestly, the, the design is got our neighbors' privacy in mind, and, and that goes for our landscaper, who also is, has that same privacy in mind. And, you know, we welcome, uh, your input.
We reached out to our neighbors and they've been supportive. Um, they've shared the plans with them and they've been, you know, giving us great feedback on it, and they've been supportive. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Foff.
Yeah, um, it's just, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding how the, um, all these sort of a boxed window, there's a couple of them on here that, um, have more of a depth, is how I, I'm not, I don't understand how that, um, kind of works, like, is it built into this stucco or what? How far out and uh, how is that? How's the flashing, et cetera? How, how does that work so that it doesn't kind of rot at the top and?
Are you talking about the front elevation, uh, the window closest to the driveway?
Yeah, and then there's one on the second floor above the porch. It looks like it's a little further.
Yeah, uh, first of all, just, we'll go through, um, the, uh, first floor, uh, window. It's just a small box out. Um, it's underneath the existing, or it's underneath the roof plane. Um, so, you know, it's, it's more of a typical detail. Um, it'll be wood clad, um, flashings will be done, you know, per general construction. Um, on the second floor, there'll be, it, you know, I think it, I think it bumps out about three or, I think, four or six inches. I don't have the floor plan. I'm looking at what you're looking at. Um, so I don't have the floor plan in front of me, but it's, you know, we'll put up a galvanized metal cap or a copper cap on top. Um, uh, to, you know, defer the, the water and any intrusion. Hopefully that explains it a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioners Trones.
Yeah, thank you. Just to close on that, my, I had a similar question, Tim. Training elevation, I know that the renderings are, you know, like we talked about, the sort of artist license, et cetera. But on the rendering, it doesn't, it, it doesn't show that box continuing up under the eve, but on your front elevation, it looks like that box goes up and closes itself under the eve. Um, you know, sort of like a bay.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have sort of an odd cap like you're talking about for the second floor. I get it on the second floor because you've got a gable.
Yeah.
But it would, am I correct in assuming that your front elevation would dictate?
Yes.
And it would just.
Yeah, and we'll come back with a, with a, a updated, uh, you know, 3D that, that, that really works.
Totally up to you, because I, I, I'm going off of the, your elevation drawing, and I, I think it's nice the way it finishes under that eve. Um, okay, my other question is specifically in that area. Am I correct in understanding and hoping that, uh, on the landscape plan, you say existing tree right in front of that area, that there's an existing Japanese maple that is gorgeous.
Um, we, we, we will, we will keep it, yes.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Camerato.
Hey, Tim, um, hi, Kokas is nice to see you.
Hi.
Hi, Sandy.
Um, I have a quick question. On the top right window, that's also box, looks like, is it, is it boxed out as well, um, like the bottom left window?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, although I can't see it in the rendering, um, is there that detail? The detail that you have in the bottom window, is that detail missing in the top window?
Well, we.
Or is it something that we're not going to see? So I'm, I'm just.
It's, you're probably not going to see it from, uh, you know, this part of Chapin, all the houses are fairly close to the property line, which is pretty typical. Um, you know, that could be something that we, we could add, we could add a, a box detail there, or a, a panel detail like we do in the lower left.
Yeah, because you have them in the other windows and you don't have it there, although I wasn't sure, um, construction-wise, if you're going to be able to see it, then maybe some of my fellow architects could look at that and see what their thoughts are on that. But that's, that's my only question. So thanks, you guys. Thanks for the, for the, um, nice prop. Um, it's really a very nice project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, uh, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Or were any comments received by other means?
No email comments have been received on this application.
And I don't see anyone with their hand raised, so I will close the public hearing. Commissioners who would like to start? Mr. Foff.
Yeah, um, so to me, the, and you're all familiar with Burlingame, you, you lived here a while. Um, Chapin is particularly, um, the materials are very, um, they're restrained. I'm, I'm just, that particular part of Chapin, actually the, um, I guess it's the Chapin Lane part, um. There, you know, they, they have one or two materials that've got the shingle, or they've got the stucco and, um, you know, just a couple of materials. This is very pure, and this has like, you know, it's got like five or six, it's got brick, glass, it's stack stone, um, then that you've got the slats. It, it, it's very, to me, it's very busy. Um, it could work, but, um, I, I feel like, uh, if it's something on the porch I find distracting that, that is keeping it from holding together, like, um, I don't know, maybe it's a stack stone, so I feel like, uh, something, maybe, maybe if one or two of those materials could be eliminated, and I mean, do, do you need the glass on the stairs? Do you, could you do that with stucco or something? I, it's, it's caught, for me, it reads kind of less calm. I mean, you have, uh, you probably know you've got a Julia and Morgan down there at three, 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 um, which is a very sedate, and not all of them have to be sedate, but I feel like a, a little less of different materials might go a long way. It's my personal opinion, but, um, you know, it's not necessarily a deal breaker, but that, I feel like it could be better by simplifying the materials. Thank you.
Okay, he, any other comments? Commissioner Trones.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with, uh, Commissioner Foff, just in terms of the, the use of the varying different materials. I, I think what it, it could come down to color, you know, in terms of whether or not this, it's sort of monochromatic or not. Um, but, you know, there is a, there is a lot going on, uh, in terms of the, you know, the, the stone base and the stucco and, and like she mentioned, the shingle siding, vertical siding and uh, metal roof on some small, small bays, um, you know, so I, I, I think that that's a detailing issue that I, I would ask the architect, or excuse me, ask the designer and the, um, applicant to, to revisit and reconsider. Um, but generally, I, I, I like what's happening on the project. If I look at the, the front elevation, you know, I think it's, it's scaled nicely, and I, I think it, um, with the added detail of the corbels and the porch columns, I think it, it does bring it in closer harmony with the rest of the neighborhood. I look at the side elevation and it, you know, it had some weird stuff happening, uh, with the, with the existing, um, additions and alterations that were, that were done, and I think this is a much better form, um, on those side elevations. That's, again, is, is more appropriate for the neighborhood as, as an overall mass. So I, I like the way that, the direction that the project is going. Um, so I think it's, it's a, a detailing and, uh, palette of materials, uh, sort of revisiting that, that needs to happen before it comes back for action. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Um, I think this is a very nice project, actually. I, I guess we all have different perspectives on what's calm and what's not. This seems like a pretty sedate project to me. I, I don't feel the business that other folks are um, are commenting on. I, you know, I think about some of the projects we have seen recently, the sort of, uh, one-trick pony, uh, one-trick pony farmhouse style things that come in glaring white that have nothing going on, and I think, oh, this is a relief. I see this and I think this is a relief. I, I, I think it's quite a nice project, and I'll be interested to see how it develops, but there's nothing that I see here that I wouldn't feel comfortable um, moving forward with, frankly. Um, okay. Any closing comments from anyone? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Camerato, sorry about that.
It's okay. Um, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Loftus. I actually really like it. Um, I like the detail. I like the, some of the differences. Um, I feel that this, um, there was a house that we saw that was on, granted, not on Chapin, but on Cortez, that has a lot of the same, near the one that we just approved, that has a lot of this old charm with a, a lot of different variations, and it's just such a pretty, it's just adds a lot of detail to that street, um, and I, I really like this house, so, um, I'm, I would like to make a motion that we bring it back to the, um, regular action calendar, as per the staff report.
A second.
Okay, uh, very good. We have a, a motion to bring this back on regular action by Commissioner Camerato, seconded by Commissioner Trones. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Trones.
Aye.
Commissioner Foff.
Aye.
Commissioner Torrance.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Loftus.
Aye. And with, um, with Chair Smith recuse, this, uh, motion passes four zero one two. I got it right that time, didn't I? Excellent. Probably my last time doing this. Um, and this motion, uh, is not appealable, so I would invite, uh, Chair Smith, Smith back to his warm chair.
Great, thank you. Uh, let me, there we go. Okay, that brings us up to. Okay, that brings us up to item number nine, uh, C seventeen sixty-six El Camino Real. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hands so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. Uh, or any commissioners not able to visit the project site, or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Seeing none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, uh, this is an application for environmental review, design review, state density bonus, and approval of community benefits for development under tier three development standards for new eight-story, three hundred and eleven unit residential apartment development at seventeen sixty-six El Camino Real. And this is in the North Burlingame Mixed Use Zone. Um, I'd like to give you just a little bit of background on this property. Uh, the planning commission did approve entitlements for this project back in August of twenty twenty. Um, it was for a mixed-use seven-story building that included retail, office, and sixty residential units. Um, the property owner has since revisited the mixed-use project and is, um, working with the current applicant Carmel Partners to, uh, sell the property. And the revised project is now entirely a hundred percent residential. Because this, uh, revised project is substantially different, both in terms of use as well as building footprint and envelope. Uh, the application, um, this is, is a fully new application that requires a separate entitlement approval as well as, uh, a new environmental review. So the project site is at the southeast corner of El Camino Real in Truesdale. The site's accessed at three different points, that's along the front entrance route of El Camino Real, Truesdale. And then there is a dogleg portion that wraps around and fronts on California Drive. The site is approximately one point seven acres and currently contains a vacant two-story mixed-use building. The applicant is proposing a new eight-story, three hundred and eleven-unit residential apartment building that would include two and a half levels of below-grade parking. Uh, due to the slope of the lot, um, from El Camino to California Drive, there's approximately a twelve and a half foot difference in elevation. So the ground level along El Camino actually is the second floor, um, above the parking that would front on California Drive. Total floor area is approximately five hundred and four thousand square feet with the re, uh, residential portion being to about two hundred and ninety thousand square feet. The overall height would be approximately eighty-eight feet to the top of the parapet as measured along Truesdale Drive. And the maximum allowed height under the tier three, uh, tier three development standard is nine stories or a hundred feet tall. The project would provide three hundred and nineteen onsite parking spaces located in two and a half levels of, uh, below-grade parking. The project includes thirty-seven studio units, a hundred and thirty-seven one-bedroom units, a hundred and twenty two-bedroom units, and seventeen three-bedroom units. Um, there would be twenty-two of those units that would be set aside as below-market rate, uh, units for very low-income households. And the North Burlingame Mixed Use Zone, um, does include tiered development standards requiring community benefits, uh, to be included to allow achievement at the highest intensity of development and the highest building heights. The applicant has elected to develop and is requesting approval of tier three, uh, development standards. So the overall project request before you this evening is for environmental review, design review, a density bonus for seventy-two additional units over the maximum tier three development. Density bonus incentives concessions and waivers to facilitate the provision of affordable housing as well as, uh, approval of the community benefits for tier three. Um, tonight's meeting also serves as an environmental scoping meeting for the planning commission and the public. Environmental review is required, um, under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And based upon the proposed project being a hundred percent residential now, it's anticipated that this project would qualify for what's called a class thirty-two infill exemption under, uh, section one-five-three-three-two of CEQA. And essentially, this is intended to promote infill development projects within urbanized areas. Staff would like to point out the location of the proposed project is adjacent to the city's police department. And given the proposed height of the building, there are serious concerns expressed by Burlingame Police Department that there could be impacts on the essential communications to and from the police department, um, due to the proposed building height. So staff just wanted to update the commission that, uh, staff is working with the applicant, uh, the police department, as well as the city's communication consultants on, on additional research, uh, to find a solution to this problem. So I'll have more, uh, for you on that when the project returns. Uh, the developer is requesting development under the tier three development standards and that, that would include three community benefits. Um, one being proposed is the affordable housing, um, that is twenty-two units or nine percent of the units um, being, uh, offered for very low-income households. That's meaning, uh, maximum income of fifty percent of San Mateo County's median income and it's for a fifty-five-year term. Uh, the second community benefit being, uh, offered is off-site, uh, street improvements. That would be across, across the street at eighteen-ten El Camino Real, uh, the vacant, uh, property. And then a mode split, which is, uh, includes a transportation demand management plan, which would strive for a twenty-five, uh, percent permanent mobility shift, uh, towards alternative transportation. Um, off-street parking being provided is, uh, gonna be three hundred and nineteen spaces where the code requires three hundred and eleven spaces. That's given a twenty percent reduction for the TDM being proposed with this project. Uh, the applicant is, uh, seeking a density bonus of thirty percent, which is, uh, consistent with, uh, state density bonus and the city's density bonus ordinance. Um, that would be twenty-two units, I'm sorry, uh, thirty percent bonus for seventy-two additional units over the tier three maximum development. And staff has provided those calculations for you in your staff report on page ten. Uh, the applicant, um, has requested the following concessions and waivers with this application uh, for lot coverage, open space setbacks, as well as parking. And staff has detailed those for you in the zoning compliance standards table found on page three of your staff report. So this evening, um, the planning commission's first discussion should be to review and take any public comment on the proposed project and any areas of potential environmental concern. And the second area of discussion is that the planning commission should comment on the design of the proposed project and staff's provided for you, um, on page twelve for reference, the, uh, design review criteria uh, for, uh, this mi, mixed-use district. Um, in, in closing, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of three letters of support. Um, one from the Bay Area Council, uh, one from the Green Belt Alliance, and one from the Housing, uh, Action Coalition. And that concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, the applicant also has a presentation for you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, then I'm gonna go ahead and open up a public hearing. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Greg Pasquale, I'm the Vice President of Development for Carmel Partners in Northern California, and I will present the project on behalf of the applicant and our architects Teresa Ruiz and Tak Katsuura will present the design. Um, could staff please put up our presentation? Thank you, uh, next slide, please. Carmel Partners is a national housing developer, we're based locally here in San Francisco, and we've built over forty-three thousand apartments, including over two thousand in the Bay Area in the last three years, and we're in the process of a couple thousand more. Um, a lot of developers you probably hear from have outside financial partners, outside construction companies. They may not even stick around through construction or operation at all. So they may make compromises between promises to the city and community, to their investors, money, to their builder, their project buyer. Carmel Partners is different, we invest on behalf of our investment fund. So the money to build the project is already committed by us. We are the general contractor that will manage construction, so if there are issues during construction, you reach out to us and we will oversee the lease-up and operation of the building for the first few years. Makes us a great neighbor because we know what we can promise and what we can build, and we work really hard to deliver on that and be a good neighbor. Next slide, please. Uh, we've recently finished a number of really well-designed and built projects, uh, you know, really highly regarded by neighbors and the cities where we built them, and locally, we're underway on construction of two projects in San Mateo County, one in Belmont, that's the upper-middle image. And here in Burlingame at One Adrian Court, which we purchased from Summer Hill, and many of you commissioners likely know very well. Next slide, please. And tonight, we're here to talk about seventeen sixty-six El Camino. Uh, it's a one point seven acre site, it is currently vacant. Uh, appreciate, uh, Catherine Kalan's outstanding overview of the site and the application, that was very thorough and, and concise, nice work. Uh, we like this site because it's near transit, it's near jobs, and importantly, it's near the services people need to enjoy life in a city like this. You can walk to not one, but two grocery stores, a pharmacy, great local coffee shops and restaurants. Um, and we just like that it's part of Burlingame, which is a really desirable city, as you all know well. Great schools, charming downtown, nice outdoors, th, this is where people like to live. Um, and it's really important to create more opportunities, given how high housing prices are, to create more opportunities at, at different income levels. Uh, the proposed project implements really years of leadership by city staff and officials like you. Long ago, I was a city planning consultant, I worked on a lot of specific plans and zoning, you know, inclusive housing ordinances for a lot of Bay Area cities, so I understand how much political will and city time and money and energy goes into, um, putting together general plans and zoning and specific plans to make projects like this possible and appreciate the work that you did. Um, this project implements the N B M U zoning with the tier three density of a hundred and forty units to the acre plus a thirty percent density bonus under state density bonus law, um, to reach three hundred and eleven homes. Um, notably, that's nearly ten percent of the city's twenty-twenty-three rent-a-cycle target. Um, point that out. The three community, community benefits, our planner described very well, again, thank you. And I would just point out that the affordable housing requirement does require twelve units at eighty percent of AMI. We are exceeding and actually nearly doubling that number to twenty-two units and reducing the affordability to fifty percent of AMI to make them more affordable, so really exceeding what's required there. And then next slide, please. Um, I wanna share some of the process, because we've actually been working on this for nearly a year now. And I think it's worth pointing out that what you see tonight is the result of a lot of work with, uh, both our team and staff. Burlingame, you're really fortunate to have a very thoughtful and organized staff. I work with cities all throughout the Bay Area, uh, and our planner, Director Gardner, your city attorney, Spancel. They've really been outstanding to work with, very clear in their communication. And, um, you know, through this process, we did look at a number of different high-rise scenarios. One was not technically feasible because of FAA restrictions. One was not financially feasible, it was just not enough more floors to make going to concrete construction worthwhile. Um, and as we looked at various configurations of wood frame podium, um, the direction that we gave to the architect is what you see below and what, uh, our architects will present to you in just a moment. But I wanna highlight some of the things that, you know, before we even started designing, uh, were worked out with input from, you know, being thoughtful about neighbors and also just input from preliminary conversations, um, with staff. Uh, the first is that this project is one story shorter, um, than it could be, and actually about ten feet shorter than the prior project approved at this location. On the El Camino frontage, it also steps down one story further as you go down, uh, toward California Drive to get a little bit of vertical articulation in the building. Um, it also steps in from the property line on the south side by about ten feet to give a little space to our neighbors. And then we've worked with the architects to really break the facade down on its two longer faces to give it a more contextual scale to other buildings up and down El Camino. Um, with that, uh, I will hand over to Teresa and Tak to present the design.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, commi, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, next slide, please. So thank you for the opportunity to present seventeen sixty-six El Camino Real. My name is Teresa Ruiz, I'm principal with TCA Architects. Like you, I'm also a planning commissioner. Um, I currently serve as the Vice President of the Alameda Planning Board. And we also had a planning meeting tonight, which I chaired and ended early so that I can be here to present the project. I understand the amount of time and commitment you have given to our community, and I want to express my gratitude to all of you, especially to commissioners Toronas and Loftus for serving your last hearing. So a little bit about TCA Architects. We are a California-based firm with offices in Oakland, LA, and Irvine. The team here tonight is based out of our Oakland office. We are passionate about multifamily and mixed-use design. We want to create vibrant communities that are part of the greater city fabric and also provide the much-needed housing for our community. On the screen are just a few examples of our projects in the peninsula, and there are many more that are either in the entitlements phase or the buil, building permit stages. We are also strong believers of being good stewards of our environment. I want to highlight eight-eight-eight North San Mateo project that is on the lower right-hand corner of the screen. Um, this project is just three miles south from our site, and it is the first lead platinum, platinum multifamily project in California. We pride ourselves in our collaborative design process. We want to hear your input as well as those from the community. So ultimately, we want to make the project better and we all want a project that we are proud of. So we have our design director, Tak Katsuura with me, and who is gonna walk through the thought process of the design. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Teresa, and thank you, commissioners. So we'll stop by just walking through the plans. So on the left-hand side, you see our basement plan, we have an additional one and a half basements underneath this. Because of the change of grade that was mentioned, El Camino being higher, California Drive being lower, we have the opportunity to daylight on El, on California Drive and have a garage entry there as well. Moving on to the right-hand side, this is a ground level plan from El Camino. On the south side on El Camino, we have all of our amenity located here, starting from the left. That amenity space is our capana room and clubhouse. We really feel like this is an important corner, it's a gateway corner, we want important amenity there to help activate it. These will glow throughout the day and night and help activate that corner. Next to that, we have a pool courtyard, and finally, on the right-hand side on that amenity, we have co-working, lobby leasing mail, um, fitness. And then to the right of that, we have another garage entry and then some back of house. This is, I'll mention, this is an all-electric building, and because of that, we have a little extra back of house on the ground level on Truesdale Drive as well. So we have some electrical rooms, transformers, and then loading and trash in the back. The rest of the space here is residential units. If you go to the next slide. On the left-hand side, this is our typical floor level with all residential units. Uh, elevators are located in the center there, you can see. On the right-hand side, this is our eighth floor. So as we go towards California, we're dropping off a story to help bring the height of the building down. There's other areas where we're adding some articulation to the massing, so on the back in the middle, we have a roof deck and a many states to help break down the massing. And on the left-hand side, we have an additional roof deck and a many space. Next slide, please. So our inspiration for this building was really kind of the Burlingame lifestyle, particularly really like, you know, these Ike Low houses that are around the area, playing off the clean lines that they have, the horizontality as well as the materiality, expressing some of the wood. We also like that these really embody kind of the indoor-outdoor lifestyle that is a great feature of living in the Bay Area, really taking advantage of the climate, trying to infuse our building with those spaces, particularly in the public amenity spaces. If you go to the next slide, please. So here's the facade of a building. Again, you know, we start with some of the big ideas of wanting to break down the massing of the building, and we purposely put a courtyard on El Camino to help do that, so the building gets broken up into two facades. Beyond that, we started playing with the massing of the building and how the building stacks to really create a pattern of two levels on the ground level, five levels in the base, and then two levels in the top. With that courtyard too, it allows the corner of the building to really stand on its own, it's helped forms a gateway for this site. And as you're entering Burlingame. And as you're entering Burlingame, again, you can see the ground level there. That's where we have that crumbling combat room. We really want that to glow and shine, be a lantern and a beacon for the site. Above is that many space I mentioned, so that this corner is really active, nice. As you move down the building a little bit past the courtyard, that's where we'll have our main entry into the building. At the corner, you really wanted to break down the materials and have something a little bit more special here. So we're bringing that wood palette that you saw on the Ikele houses. It was a little bit more glazing. Next slide, please. So this is a view from El Camino looking the other direction. Here again, you can see kind of the emphasis of that two over five over two pattern that we're playing with. We also really tried to break down the parapet of these buildings to try to show some different varieties. So we have some longer chunks that didn't get broken down where we have balconies and the roof decks. Next slide, please. This is the backside of the building. That's the police station in front. You know, again, here we're kind of playing with different massing moves in the middle. You can see that's where you have that roof deck. It helps break up the parapet, break down the scale. On the left-hand side, we added bay windows to add some texture to what otherwise would have been a flat facade. And on the right-hand side, again, you can see the kind of the change of scale. Next slide, please. So this is the view from California, starting kind of on the very left of the building. You can see, or this area steps down one story. So we're bringing down the height. And then again, we're kind of playing with the colors and materials to kind of add a little bit pop outs to this building to the side to break up the scale a little bit as well as changing the height as we go through the building. This is an important corner and view. So we've again brought that kind of wooden material here to tie it back to the corner of Truesdale and El Camino Real as well. Next slide, please. We're using a variety of mil- materials on this project, starting with the windows. We're using VPI windows and a mixture of bronze and white. These are high-quality vinyl windows. Um, they're very large in size as well, so we can do, you know, five by eight and bigger. We're bringing in mix and two tones. We're using a darker mix, kind of break at the base of the building on El Camino Real that wraps around the Truesdale. And we're bringing a lighter brick on top of that on the El Camino Real facade. We like to break against tying back to those Ikele houses and some of the materials they use there. And then we also have wood that we're using various access points as like the corners and main elements. And then stucco with a variety of colors. Next slide, please. Here you can just see some examples of the VPI windows that Carmel has installed in some of their past projects. Again, they're very big uh, and very high quality. The other great thing about these windows is they have a very high STC rating. We know we're located near the train tracks and we want this building to be comfortable for our occupants. So it's actually being designed to more of a condo level specification. So it's, you know, the sound level will be lower in this building than a typical multifamily building, which is nice. And on the top left, you can see a picture of the inside of one of those big large windows in the bedroom. Next slide, please. For the landscape, you know, we tried to keep, keep in the same kind of design ideas and aesthetics that were going for the building. So we're really going again for that mid-century my- mid-century modern vibe. But also playing with the lushness that we want to accomplish in these courtyards. Um, we really bring some greenery into the site and for the tenants to live there. Next slide, please. So here you can see our landscape plan. We'll start with the courtyards and the pool courtyard. Um, so on the El Camino side, we have the courtyard. One of the nice things that we're really trying to do is we're also providing some overhangs between the building and the courtyard. So there's some kind of covered spaces. So we're really playing up that indoor-outdoor feeling. Um, you know, really have it so that you can go between the many courtyards. I feel like more one space, so it feels larger than it is. Moving next to the garden courtyard, they have a real lushness to this courtyard. We want to bring in some big, nice trees here. On the bottom of the deck courtyard, you know, it's connected to the amenities to the south and it's in the north side of that courtyard. We're creating different pockets for activities, whether it's sitting in the hammock, sitting in table groups and on the right-hand side, some barbecue and cooking areas. We have two roof decks. The one on the north is our, we're calling our sunrise deck. It's the area to go look out the planes landing. Look out the trains. We even want to put some binoculars there so you can really see and enjoy the view. Uh, on the south side, we're calling that our sunset deck. Again, both these decks have a menu spaces located adjacent to them. So again, there's that great indoor-outdoor living. And then on the back of the site, we have an EVA lane that's coming in that will paint some games onto that area. It's such a shuffleboard. And then to the right of that, we have some storm treatment, water treatment area. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll hand it back to Greg. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're here to answer questions. Also, we're joined by Jesse Markman, our landscape designer, who's available to answer questions. Uh, and for community who are interested, we've set up a website at seventeen sixty-six ECR dot com. As of tonight, we've gotten forty-three comments through that website. We've put the word out through neighbors and other social networks so that people can stay informed about the project and also have an easy way to reach us. Uh, so that, you know, I can come down and meet them for coffee and tell about the project or that we can answer, you know, minor questions as they come because we do think it is important, uh, you know, in the interest of being a good neighbor to be responsive and share information. Um, so we'll now answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Foff.
Well, yes, thank you very much for the nice presentation. Um, uh, one is just, well, well, first of all, um, have you had contact with the people who I think they're, they live in townhomes or condos, um, low, lower scale um, off of California Drive, um, next to the dog like?
Yes, we reached out to them early in the project. We knew they're important neighbors. We sent them all a mailer and invited them to a Zoom meeting and we've had follow-up by emails with responses to their questions and we did let them know there was a hearing tonight as well.
Okay, so, um, all right. And then the second question is, um, did you uh, receive what I got just shortly before the meeting, which was um, from one of our um, bike folks uh, suggesting a change at the corner of, um, uh, Truesdale and El Camino, um, well, in addition, basically to kind of make a bulb out uh, for facility of ease of crossing, um, a Truesdale because it's kind of dangerous there. Did you receive that?
No.
Okay.
So we'll be happy to look at it.
That, that's great because I thought it was a really good, uh, really valid suggestion. Thank you.
Commissioner Tronos.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I had the same question regarding the bulb outs received that um, as sort of a received after just prior to the meeting. And I think we actually talked to, I, I think it was this project, Kevin, I don't know if you remember that we talked to the prior developer who was looking at this corner uh, about doing some bulb outs there to help with the these pedestrian path and over to, um, the Millbury Station, just make that walking um, path a little bit, a little bit easier to navigate. So if you could look at that, I think that'd be great. Um, question I have, just, just to be clear, I think I'm clear, but just for the public sake and, and for future reference, on the community benefits, I get, you know, one and two, affordable housing, second one, the off-street improvements. It looks like you're going to be doing some, um, street tree work and sorry, train. Um, street tree work and, and sidewalk work across the street. Um, okay. Um, and then for the, for the mode split, the amenities that are, that are mentioned, like fitness center, charging station, recreation space. The idea there is to correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the idea is to create more amenity. It allows the residents to sort of stay on-site, not have to get in their car and travel to go to a fitness center, et cetera. So those amenities are for the residents here, not, not amenities for the public, but amenities for the residents to try to help with the, the transportation plan, correct?
Actually, just to be clear, those amenities are not part of the transportation demand management program. Those amenities are just part of building multifamily apartments in today's market. Um, they're, they're sort of an arms race between us and our competitors, building amenities like that. And we also think it's part of how you make these buildings nice to live in. The transportation demand management plan has been drafted by Hexagon, uh, the traffic engineers that the city uses quite a lot as well. And it relies more on things related to when residents leave the building, how to encourage them to use alternate modes to single occupant vehicle. So it has more to do with, you know, first of all, reducing parking, uh, which, you know, does discourage auto ownership. Um, the bike parking in the building. Uh, trip information that will give residents, when they sign a lease, when they move into the building, will give them trip information, uh, regular uh, an app that we provide residents that has, um, real-time trip information. An onsite staff person whose job is coordinating carpools and also a transit subsidy. So residents, uh, who use transit with a monthly transit pass or something like that, get a subsidy to help pay the cost of that transit use. So the amenities are kind of a separate topic. They're not part of the transportation demand management plan.
Okay, well then, um, then maybe this isn't a question for you, Greg. It's just for, for staff's sake, the amenities to reduce trips is mentioned within the mode split community benefit number three that we're being asked to review. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to be clear that that amenity is intended for the, the residents of this property and it's somehow connected to the mode split community benefit.
And I apologize, it may be that the traffic engineer does consider that a reduction, that people aren't getting in their car to drive to twenty-four hour fitness.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the logic seems to fit and, and I just, again, I just wanted to be clear because and, and the reason, Greg, I'm drilling down on this is we've had projects in the past where a community benefit might be something like a fitness center or a community room that's available to the public, you know, beyond the realm of the residents. In this case, I'm reading this as amenities for the residents that help with trip reduction.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, your zoning is very clear and it's objective list of of items. It's a menu that you can select from and one of them is that sort of community room that you mentioned. There is a different one for transportation demand management trip reduction. And that is the one that we have opted to elect.
Got it. Okay. All right. So then I'm clear. Okay. Um, my last questions are, are in regards to design review and, um, the architecture. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the facade of the building and, you know, it's, it's sort of from, from the perspective of the renderings that, that are presented, um, you know, sort of the semi-aerial views and the elevated views of the elevations. It's a handsome building. Um, you know, it's, it, it looks residential and feel. You know, it, it's got good use of materials in my mind. Um, but I, I, I'd like to drill down a little bit on the experience at the ground level. Um, and my, my question is, you know, for the architects, I guess, in, in, in designing the facade, you've got a ground level or what I, what I might expect to be a ground level, which is essentially two-story volumes in some areas. Um, you know, at that ground level before you transition to the wood siding and the other palette of materials up at the third floor, correct?
I just correct.
Okay, so, and then in looking at, at the elevations then and, and sort of zeroing in on, on that sort of ground floor experience, what I'm kind of missing and, and maybe it's just a matter of, you know, going through and making another pass at this ground floor that I'm, I'm hoping you can make. But what I'm missing is that ground floor experience of sort of, you know, eight or nine-foot doors, you know, awning or horizontal element that's at, you know, say a ten or eleven-foot height. And then continuing up with, you know, some sort of clear story or something that might be above that element before you work your way up to the rest of the facade. So that what I've often thought is, is that at that ground level, it doesn't matter what's happening above you in terms of whether it's four stories or six stories or eight stories because you've got a good experience down at that ground level. What I'm seeing is, you know, sort of these two-story columns and, and glass in some of the two-story volume areas. I do on the El Camino side, you know, continuing down that elevation, I'm seeing, you know, a horizontal element, but it looks to be up at, you know, almost like a thirteen or fourteen-foot height. And so in order to make the facade work, it feels like everything has had to be stretched a little bit on that, on that, what otherwise might be a, a one-story space at the ground level, which is actually two stories. And now everything has to get sort of taller and elevated. So my question is, is can there be some revisiting of, of sort of drilling down on that ground floor experience? And, and, you know, maybe revisiting some of what I might call the randomness of sort of where the stone pillars come down relative to that strong horizontal that's at the third floor, just to, to give the building some grounding and, and to bolster that experience down at that pedestrian level. Is there something that can happen there? As you, as you make another pass through before this comes back for, for action?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. And I just want to add to, you know, we have a, a strong element at the lobby that's supposed to be a canopy. I think it's getting a little bit obscured by the trees right now. We definitely want that great pedestrian feeling as you walk through this building. I think what's important is that, you know, and it's hard to see here because of the trees that that lobby is being called out. That's something that we were very concerned about during the design of this process. So we do want that special experience there. And we set the, you know, the ground foot back a little bit too. So there's opportunity for a little bit landscape elements as well to create that a little bit more residential feeling. And then at the corner, you know, we really were going for that lantern look where we wanted it to glow and look, you know, really nice so you can see inside.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I can see that, but, but, you know, as you're talking about it and, you know, that horizontal element, like I said, that's sort of obscured behind the, obscured behind the trees and you work your way down the El Camino elevation and you've got the lobby where you have the address, you know, numbers at seventeen sixty-six or wherever we're at, you know, that are on top of that horizontal. But that horizontal, like I said, is it appears to be up at about thirteen or fourteen feet, you know, if you've got the doors that are down there at nine feet. And so my point is, is that it's one thing to have a monumental experience as a pedestrian, et cetera, but I, 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 I think the, I think that the experience is better, you know, when it's down, something's down at a, at a pedestrian scale and you've got the building coming down and touching the ground in, with a little bit more, um, rational approach from the solids that are up above, coming down to some solids down at the ground floor. I'm not saying you have to create a, you know, nineteen thirties, you know, office building with commercial on the ground floor with columns that come down, et cetera, but, but just something a little bit more scaled to the pedestrian and, and, um, touching the building or, or the building touching the ground a little bit better, I guess, is what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, absolutely. We can continue to study that in the human scale as we've advanced the building.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all, that's, that's what I'm asking. So. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, with that, then I'm gonna go ahead and go to the public and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this item. Looks like we have one hand up in the air. Okay, Scott, if you unmute yourself, uh, it's your turn.
Actually, I'm just one of the panelists working for the arc, for the, uh, for Carmel.
Well, okay.
Getting in late. I've been here. I just couldn't, couldn't get in. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then if we don't have any actual public wanting to speak, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have any, uh, comments, Director Gardner?
We do. Uh, we have two email comments, so I will read those. Uh, the first, okay, let me. Okay, the first, uh, is not signed. It says, hello, I am a neighbor invited to the meeting. Here are some questions. One, parking is already inadequate or restricted, limited in the surrounding area. What do you plan to do to address this? Two, privacy. Where are you planning for the tower window placement to minimize intrusion into nearby homes? Three, shadows. Have you considered how to minimize casting darkness over nearby homes? Four, traffic. The intersection of Truesdale and California is already hazardous for pedestrians and vehicles. Are there plans for more structured traffic control? Uh, also, the intersection of El Camino Real and Truesdale is a well-traveled route already. The frontage slip road in front of the building adds an additional danger at the interface with this intersection and is inadequately controlled. What are the plans to address this in anticipation of higher volume? Thank you. And as mentioned, there is not a signature on that. Uh, the other email is the one that the commissioners had, uh, referenced and I will read it. I did also forward it to Mr. Piscuali, um, so that he could see it as well. And in particular, the exhibits. It's signed by Medito and it reads, good evening commissioners. As you know, there's a crosswalk uh, there crossing Truesdale that is awfully long and dangerous to cross. That crosswalk is not controlled by the signals there. So people crossing are at the mercy of drivers who meet them at the crosswalk. And they could be And they could be coming from any of Truesdale's four lanes or really turning from eight different directions. Uh, you have to have your head on a swivel to cross there. And even then you will still get hit. At the very least, the developers should be compelled to bulb out their corner to shorten the crossing, make it's more prominent, more visible to slow turns. A simple act of widening the sidewalk at that corner also improves pedestrian and driver mutual visibility. This is important for pedestrian safety, for future users, and indeed even for current Burlingame folks. The curb radius they show right now is actually negative pet space and encourages high speed turns. Thank you for any help you can provide. And that is signed Manito. And then he has provided a couple of um, annotated diagrams, um, which has been uh, forwarded to the applicant.
Great, thank you. Okay, so uh, closing the public hearing and coming back to the commissioners. Um, do we want to start with maybe some of the environmental concerns first and see what we've got with regards to that? Um, okay, it looks like maybe, oh, there we go. One, Commissioner Foff.
I I'm not really sure. Um, the environmental concerns, does that include light and shadow and such or?
Well, it'll be helpful.
Okay, so um. I don't know if this is solvable or not, but um, I I heard that the um police may have the issues or they have issues with their um, communication um, equipment working properly. And I can only imagine the folks next door on California Drive um not being thrilled about having a um, that many hundred feet next to them. I'm just guessing. So I I was just wondering, did you consider perhaps a it's a little into the design review, but not really. It's a sort of a a structural thing. Um, the dog leg, did you consider perhaps um, slipping maybe that um I guess not the part with the pool, but it would be just the park. Uh, it looks like a sort of a um, a pocket park um, down to the other end, which I guess would be about the second floor at the other end because of the the slope on um, from one end to the other of Al Camino to California. And um, so thereby making that the top um, the top of, you know, finish out, finish where you have sun and and such. Having the the park on the second floor there and then, um, you know, I guess that would take up about two thirds of the length of the dog leg. Um, rather than um having that piece come out. It it's just a question I um, that's that I was curious about. Thank you.
Okay. Um, well, if we don't have other environmental things that we're trying to bring out. As far as concerns on that, then let's go to design review uh, by Chair Loftus.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, the environmental the environmental study is the is the usual cast of characters, right? Traffic being among the, you know, first among equals. Uh, I I don't even know what to say about it. Uh, there's nothing special about this as, you know, relative to the other projects we've seen, I think. So I think we have to keep doing um, for environmental studies, what we've been doing to date on those. Um, and I'm happy to pick up and run with the design review though.
Okay.
If you, if you
Swing away.
So um, I I find myself in this really funny situation. When I looked at this project, I I became, so you know, sort of uh, disoriented, confused, nonplussed. I'm not sure exactly what to say. Um, until I saw the 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 uh, conceptual models that were put in front of us at the very beginning of the presentation. And the conceptual models are, you know, so the so-called white models, they're often called, they're, they have no materials on them. They're simply the shapes, the the articulation. Um, and I found that model very compelling. And the reason I found it very compelling is that I think that one of the, one of the key requirements of large architecture like this, especially in an urban environment is legibility. And I find this project to be, as it's presented to us in the elevations and in the uh, renderings to be highly illegible. But suddenly it became very legible with that conceptual model. And and so I I I think the problem that I'm having with this project is that it's trying so hard to do all the things that a large residential, multifamily residential project tries to do. It's trying so hard that it's gone overboard. Uh, I, like Commissioner Foff said about the smaller project, the house a while ago, I find this project sort of frenetic. It's just got way too much stuff going on. I find a lot that it it feels to me like there's a lot of sort of willful design uh, maneuvers that are without sort of substance. And all in the, all with a view towards breaking down the mass of the building and to not be boring because it's a large building. And to give you an example of that, if you look at uh, sheet A, A O point one two. Um, the that elevation that that rendering that's put in front of us. So the corner is established pretty well. There's some sort of brick at the corner and that makes sense. And then there's the sort of saddlebag, the the white, the horizontal thin saddlebag with white brick, I suspect. That's inserted into the middle of that, the yellow or brick and it's pulled out slightly. And that's registered on the other side of the of the opening, uh, you know, the entry opening. And that all makes, that seems to be okay. And then sort of halfway down the facade and then on top of the, as Commissioner Toronto says, the ground floor is that sort of really, really high ground floor. That's sort of nondescript as far as we can tell. And then the white horizontal banding happens right above that. And above that is uh, what will be seen as the top of the building. That makes for perfect sense so far. And then suddenly, for no apparent reason at all, the the dark color of the upper left becomes the dark color of the lower right and the white color of the lower left becomes a I I have no idea why you would do such a thing. It doesn't help the legibility of the building. And that's just the start. If you track this thing all the way around, if you start following the sides, they're just frenetically flipping and flopping and changing. It breaks down what is a very, very straightforward conceptual massing into something that that's more graphic than architectural. And I I say that that's a problem with this building. It's more graphic than architectural as it stands right now. For the very reason that they're they're, you're, you know, you're awful, often walking a fine line when you design a building this big. Uh, that you're, and as you try to break down the articulated and break down the scale, you walk a very fine line between tearing the building apart by doing that. And you have to find that line where it articulates, you represent what needs to be represented in a piece of urban architecture. And it still holds together as a whole. And this building is not holding together as a whole. Um, I I think that conceptually it makes perfect sense as far as I I can tell. The massing is good and the general articulation of the massing and the holding of the corners and the holding of the street facade is all good. It does need to be fine tuned at pedestrian scale, but it really needs to be just ratcheted back uh, with regard to its graphicness. It needs to be a piece of urban architecture as opposed to a graphic. Um, as opposed to a graphic, a three dimensional graphic. This one is more important in a lot of ways than some of the other ones that we've looked at recently because of where it is. Those other ones are, they're happening in not the hinterlands. That's not the right thing to say. But they're in less urban environments. And this is going to establish, like, this is a major gateway into into our city. And to have a piece of architecture as frenetic as this at as a gateway piece, I think is a, isn't a mistake. So um, that's my immediate reaction to it. I think just we need to take a step back. The designers need to take a step back and really think about how far they need to push this thing to keep it from being boring without going too far and breaking it down so far that it's just an illegible building. I have no idea what's going on on this building. I'm done.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Camarado.
Yeah, um, so when I first looked at this project, um, one of the comments that I made kind of before the meeting was I asked staff to kind of look at some of our other projects that are in town to see how projects are going to kind of fit within each other. Um, and it was because I got confused. And it became very clear tonight when I, as I was sitting here just listening. Um, I'm confused because there's just too much going on on this particular building. And I I'm not against um, the structure itself. But uh, I would love to see this facade of this building be a little more s- uh, I don't know if it's simple, if it's the, if it's the materials on the front facade, this yellow material, the siding, or if it's just that I want it to be a little more simple and elegant and um um I feel like it just needs to be a beautiful glass piece. I don't know why I feel that way. And I know that's probably not something that can be done because of the cost, but I feel like it's just trying too hard. Um, so I I'm not opposed to the project. I'm I'm opposed and maybe it's just all the color variations and how um, Commissioner Vice Chair Loftus um, uh, put this very simple that there's just the colors are just all over the place and maybe that's what confused me. Um, but again, I think that facade should be a little more simple and a little more elegant. Um, and I'd like to see the whole thing be one big o- kind of open, uh, you know, some so- something a little more elegant on that corner. Um, I think we talked about the street and how dangerous that street is um, with the traffic. So I'm glad that we've discussed that. Um, I also am concerned about those neighbors that are living in the town home. Um, and some of that shadow studying, I don't know if we've done a shadow studying on this. Um, or at least looked at what that's gonna, how that's gonna impact them. Um, but that is one of my concerns as well. Um, other than that, um, I know that there's probably another go around on this, so I look forward to seeing that.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Tronos.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, I I really appreciate where Commissioner Loftus or excuse me, Vice Chair Loftus went with his comments. Um, you know, the difficulties that I was seeing, you know, so vertically between the third floor and the and the second and first floor. I, he points out very well are happening horizontally across the facade. You know, I I I think um, I think a- again, because of or because you can create a good pedestrian experience at the ground floor, you can then create larger buildings or 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 buildings of of whatever size and scale necessary that that work well, if they work well and the architecture holds together nicely. Um, you know, I think we as a a commission generally have gotten past being afraid of large buildings. I think we as a community have to be, have to not be afraid of large buildings. Um, you know, if this were the eighties and nineties, we would have been breaking down the facade into, you know, twenty five or thirty five foot bays with little, you know, gables on each one, you know, and so glad we grew out of that. Um, and unfortunately I had to live through it, but we made it. Um, and and so now, you know, again, you know, I I I think we can have a facade that work, that can be this large. Um, but it has good scale already because it has human things like like windows and and balconies and and things that tell us it's a residential building, you know, so um, I agree one hundred percent with what with with Vice Chair Loftus's comments and and I'm glad he pointed that out for us. Um, and you know, we can kind of relax a little bit more and I think it'll help with the economics of the project, quite frankly. Um, you know, so again, I I think that there should be a revisiting of that ground floor experience. And then, you know, the what what's happening across the facade can be simplified and it can hang together as as all one project and you'll you'll know it's part of a project. Um, you know, just by looking at it, you know, um. So, you know, I don't, um, in terms of the environmental, uh, uh, again, I agree that it's, you know, it's it's the standard fare of 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 issues that need to be examined. Um, you know, I really think that that I hope that the the communications issue with the uh, police department can be sorted out and it doesn't become an insurmountable hurdle. Um, in regards to the entitlements and the and the project, I can support the density bonuses, the way that they've been crafted and the um, the um development standard waivers. Um, I really appreciate the developer, um, Carmel Partners committing to a greater level of affordability than is required. Um, I really commend them for that and and thank them for that and and hope that that can remain part of the project as it moves forward. Um, you know, I I think staff has gonna done a good job of reviewing the community benefits. Um, and um, I think that they're supportable. So I I think it's a good project. Um, you know, I'd I'd like to just see it revisited in terms of the design review before this comes back for action. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Um. I I agree with a lot of what's been said this evening. Um, I, when I look at it, I see a lot of really big windows. Um, I'm not one that wants to live in a fishbowl. So as I look, a lot of those windows, they're floor to ceiling and really you only have the structural band in between them. Uh, so I'm a little concerned with that and even more so on the ground level in that amenity space. Um. As a guy who does retail all the time, I need room for utilities and things like that. So you can't just have a foot and a half from uh, the bottom of one floor to the top of the other. You gotta have things and that means that it has to then show in the outside elevation too, because you want to cover them. So there just doesn't seem to be as much hierarchy of levels that help translate upward with this. It's all just very strong, thin horizontals. Which, yes, you can do that in a Nycler house because it's only spanning twenty feet. Uh, so I think that when you really start to look at it more structurally, I think it needs more, especially on that bottom level. Um, I agree with the fact that there's maybe a few too many materials and too much switching. But yet not enough depth. I find the elevations kind of flat in that it is a large area of wood. The wood's not doing anything for me on the corner. Uh, not the material that has been chosen, nor the fact that there's no detail being added to it or any kind of relief. Um, so I think that there, you know, some texture would be helpful to this project. And a lot of that is just kind of the way the materials are being shown. So um, I think it's gonna take some work. Um. I I'm not afraid of the mass. I think the courtyards probably are in the right spots in order to make the mass work and make the layouts work. I can appreciate that it's a rather large surface next to the smaller townhomes on the uh, on the south side. But I don't know how we change that without messing up all the lots that are where we're building big buildings. I mean, it seems like every multifamily we're chasing uh, is now a six, seven story building next to a two, three story building. And I just don't know that we can stop that progress just because they're all there. Um, so I I can, I again, like Commissioner Tronos, I appreciate the effort that uh, Carmel Partners is putting into the affordability and and taking on this project, a huge departure from where it was. Um, and it's hard to start over like that, but I can appreciate what they're doing. So um, I think that there's some work to be done and hopefully they've gotten enough uh, feedback from us that will help uh, drive the design. Um, okay, so we've all had a good shot at this. Um, I think we need we need a motion. Don't. Yes. It's a study. We've given them the direction or the minimal direction we need on the environmental. And it's just a design review study, right? Director Gardner?
Yeah, so by default, uh, typically when there's an environmental uh, document that goes with it, then the whole thing comes back on regular action. Um, this is a little different because it's, we're looking at a class thirty two infill exemption, but I think that would still apply in that um, you'd want to be uh, taking action on the SEQA document regardless. So it'll come back, uh, motion's not necessary.
So what you're saying is they don't have to do anything more?
Correct.
Just to clarify just to clarify what I heard, um, a few of the commissioners request was that this actually be Just to clarify, what I heard, um, a few of the commissioners request was that this actually be brought back for study, uh, second study review prior to action, was that just to clarify?
I'm seeing a lot of other nodding. I mean, it, I don't know that it's a must-have. Um, I think that the I think that the team can pull together the comments that we've said and and get it together for for an action review. I'm not seeing anybody opposing. So, okay.
Thank you.
Good, then I think we're otherwise done with item nine C. Which then takes us to item ten commissioners reports. Do we have any commissioners reports this evening? No, moving on to directors reports. Director Gardner, what do you got for us?
Uh, there are no FYIs, uh, but at the last city council meeting, uh, there were not any planning items per se. There was a presentation by one shoreline uh, to talk about the regional project that they've been working on that includes Burlingame, Millbrae and SFO. Um, that's pretty interesting if uh commissioners are interested in looking at that. It was early in the meeting and um, it's essentially a uh large-scale infrastructure project is being put together. And uh, there were some details on how that works in terms of sea level rise, flood control um and and whatnot.
Okay. Great. Well, then I think that brings us to the end of the evening. So then I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at ten, twelve PM. Thank you very much, everybody, for your participation this evening.
Thanks, everyone.